Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March 22nd, 2021 to order. First, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we move to number three, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Seeing none, we need a mover and secondar for approval. Moved by Council Vane, second by Council Vardy. Moved by Council Vane, second by-
Mayor Jordan, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but if we're voting on the agenda, I was looking at lifting something under council endorsement package. Will I have to do that now? Or can I wait till we get to item four?
You can do that when it's-
Okay, good.
We're at that item.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Moved by Council Vane, second by Council Vardy. Resolve that the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of March 22nd, 2021 be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Moving to number four, council endorsement package. For A, Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package. Counselor Dunstall.
Yeah, Mayor Jordan, I was just wondering if we could, there's two items under that, recommendations, one and two. Could we vote on them separately? Is that possible?
I'll note that with the clerk. Yeah, do you have a- Okay, so item one is the recommendation regarding Chair and Vice Chair. So we do, we need a motion then, right? Yeah. First, we have, is there any discussion? I'll read the resolution. I'll wait for the resolution and then we have Counselor Dunstall as the mover. All right, need a secondar. Counselor Vane. Any discussion?
Could I have a recorded vote on this if there's no discussion?
Yep.
Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee-
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Vardy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering why we're lifting this for discussion. Perhaps Counselor Dunstall could tell us why.
Counselor Dunstall.
I don't have anything to tell. I just asked if we could vote on it separately. That was all the two separate items, two separate issues. The, the registration of all these properties, I understand sometimes counselors are not in favor of it. And I thought, well, these two items are totally different. So all I wanted to know is if we could vote on it separately. I didn't ask for any discussion.
Okay.
That's all.
On the first item, I guess I have a few remarks. And that's, I'm very pleased that Counselor Bothwell was democratically elected to chair the committee, which was in line with the terms and conditions of the, of that committee. So congratulations, Counselor Bothwell, and look forward to you chairing the committee. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments. I'll read the resolution again. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated March 22nd, 2021 in regard to item number one be approved. And it's a recorded vote.
Counselor Bothwell?
I can vote for this. I guess there's no conflict. I mean, yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Could you read the resolution? Can you read the full resolution that we're voting for? We just, I'm sorry, but I'm looking at the minutes, but I can't find it. So we're in what item? Item four A?
Page six.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, the clerk will read it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The resolution states resolve that Counselor Bothwell be elected as a chair and that Kate Shrobe elected as a vice chair for the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee.
Okay, I think I found it.
Continue, Counselor Dunstall.
So, sorry, is there room for discussion? Can we discuss this?
Counselor Sharp, it's too late. You should have put your hand up before the resolution was read.
So can I-
We're gonna continue with the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, I abstain.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp?
No.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Did you call that vote that was recorded? Can you read the roll call?
Sure.
Sarah?
Yeah, I have Counselor Bothwell, yes. So in favor, I have Counselor Bothwell, Counselor Frank, Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Vardy, and Mayor Jordan. And I have Counselor Dunstall abstaining, which is recorded in the negative. And I have Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Sharp, and Counselor Vane saying no.
Need a mover and secondar for the second part of this resolution. Counselor Vane. Seconder. Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Sharp, discussion?
Yeah, someone else hands up. Can you take me a second?
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Yeah, I do have some questions regarding the number of homes. I believe it's around 100 and, correct me if I'm wrong, what, 170 homes was it? It was a very, a lot of, took up a lot of pages in the report. Anyways, so if you can explain, if somebody could explain to me how this all works, and I do have a pretty good idea, but I'd like the public to also know, that's why I'm asking the question. Have the people all been notified who have had their photos of their homes posted in the, in our agenda here? And what are the, if the people don't want to be on the, on the list at all, what are the, how does the process work for them? Again, I just want to do this mainly for the public, too. Thank you.
Antonetta?
Through you, Mayor Jordan. Thank you for the question, Counselor Cadwell. First, I'd like to note that planning will be bringing a report, a more detailed report about this with more information on the March 29th Committee of the Whole Meeting, but I'm very happy to answer the question. So first, let me start by what is listing. Listing is where a property gets added to the municipal heritage register. It is not registered on title. It does not pose any restrictions in terms of additions or changes to the home. What it does is that if the property were to ever seek a demolition permit from the town, council would have 60 days to decide whether or not we should designate the property under the Ontario Heritage Act, or whether or not the demolition can occur because the property does not meet the threshold provided by the Ontario Heritage Act for the designation of homes under criteria 906. By way of answering your question in terms of did we notify homeowners, homeowners are not notified of listing or designations. Again, listing is just a simple register that we have. This property looks like it might have heritage value, and we'd want some additional due diligence done prior to any potential designation. In terms of the process, as I understand it here in Grimsby, there is an appeal process. The appeal process is not provided by the act. This is a town of Grimsby specific process, and the owners would have to do their own research to indicate that they believe the property does not meet the criteria 906 for eventual designation, and then it could come to council and potentially it can be moved from the register. The onus again is on the property owner, and there's no timeline with which staff have to hear their particular sort of reservations or complaints. But like I said, that's Grimsby specific across the province. It's not as common for people to have an option to ask to be removed from the municipal heritage register. Did I answer all your questions, counselor?
Yes, thank you, Antonetta, for that clarification. I really appreciate that. So to, this, this, again, and I respect it now more because of the protecting from the demolition and that, and I thank you for that. But the concern I, that I have, and I have a couple of businesses have called, have reached out to me. With, with the businesses and the ownership of that property being on this list, could that affect any future sales or anything like that? Possibly? That's where I was, I was getting some concerns from a couple of the business owners, Antonetta. So if you could clarify that, that'd be great, too, then. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, nothing is registered on the title of the property, so it doesn't have to, there's nothing that needs to be disclosed at the time of sale. This only really has any effect if a current, a current or future property owner says, I want to demolish my building. So if the business owners you're talking to have no intentions of demolishing their building, it's not a problem. If they don't meet the criteria for designation, they could go ahead and demolish the building. It's only if they do meet the criteria for designation, then council has the decision, do we protect this building? Or do we allow it to be demolished?
Thank you very much, Antonetta. You clarified it very well for me. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a further clarification, please, Antonetta. I thought that we do send them all a letter, so they will receive a letter stating that they're on the register and what their repeal rights are, correct? And that if they wish to appeal, that they need to provide staff with some substantiation as to why their property should be removed. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, they will receive a letter, but they haven't before tonight. I understood the question to be, were they notified that their properties were on the agenda tonight, or know that this is coming? No. The letters will happen after they've been added to the register to, to let them know that they've been added to the register and to outline the internal process at the town of Grimsby for potentially appealing the inclusion on the register.
I appreciate that. And I think I mentioned at the heritage meeting that it would be very timely to get that out as soon as possible, just because, you know, those who are watching tonight are going to wonder what they're going to hear and what that means. And I think having that information to them as soon as possible would be good. And, and perhaps if you could include that brochure that you created, which is very helpful on what being on the register means that was circulated to the committee, I think that's a really valuable pamphlet as well. That would, I, that's just a suggestion. I just think anything we can provide to the community to give them more information is, is helpful.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that is our intention. That's exactly the reason why we created the brochure. And like I said, we plan to also show the balance of council, that brochure at the next committee of the whole meeting on March 29th, where we'd like to talk a little bit in more detail about the register and the mass inclusions. But yes, we created that brochure, and it'll be certainly included in the correspondence with the property owners.
Appreciate that. And I think we also talked at the committee about education and being really proactive in trying to help the community understand what these types of, what being on the register means, what designation means, and that that's a future mandate of the committee to, to start rolling out some, some more education material and, and get some more social media stuff out there about what it means, so that as they hear more and more about it, it will become more comfortable and understandable. Is that what, what we're doing? Is that what I understand?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I understand that's already included in this committee's terms of reference and in terms of, and goals and objectives for their year. We, we have created the promotional materials to help advance that, but it's very imperative that the committee members start to talk to community members and start to maybe demystify and tackle some of the many myths out there about heritage conservation, heritage preservation, what listing means, and also what it doesn't mean, so that there's no sense of alarm with people who are included on the register. That said, there were many significant buildings that, you know, to be quite frank, is quite surprising that they were not included on the register. So staff is very proud and excited to bring forward these properties for inclusion on the municipal heritage register.
Just to say thank you very much for all the hard work staff did. And I know you had a student help as well, so staff and your students. I think they, they did an awesome job in putting that together. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious if this list of houses, if any of these houses or these properties were already on the registry before, and then were taken off and now are being put back on again. So I'm just, I'm curious about that, because if some of these, these properties that were on and chose to, if they fought it, or whatever the case was, and went and got their, their properties off the list, I think it would be interesting, you know, I think it's worth looking at to see, why would we make them do it twice? So I was just curious if there was any properties like that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not aware of any properties that successfully argued to be moved from the register that we've now re-added to the register. I am, however, aware that some of these properties were included, I believe, back in the late 2000s or so, I think between 2008 and 2010. And there were some reasons at the time that staff and the committee did not include pursuing these properties on the register, but we have done our cursory review, and the ones that we're proposing do meet our intention in terms of they should be on a municipal heritage register. That said, if you're aware of a property and a property owner has documentation that they've sort of successfully said that they don't meet the criteria for inclusion, happy to have that and then remove that particular property before the minutes and everything, the motions sort of get ratified at council. So please bring any of those to our attention. However, encircling back with Bianca, and I believe she did reach out to some of our former staff. She confirmed that the properties were originally included, but then abandoned by staff at some point, just not, I, I don't know the exact reason, but certainly we could bring that forward at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Thank you, Antonetta. Seeing no further questions, just, I, I again want to thank the staff through you, Antonetta, for this giant task to put this many homes on. And, and I think we can even go further with heritage being such an important fabric of our community, and it's the reason, one of the reasons people move here. The heritage is our prosperity, and it just can't, once it's gone, it can't be replaced. So moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated March 22nd, 21, 2021 in regard to item number two be approved. All in favor? Okay, some people aren't voting, so I'll just go with a recorded vote on that. It's just hard to see with this many people on the screen. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yeah.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Up next, we have number four, B, Active Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package. Need a mover and secondar? Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Vardy.
I want to lift something, sorry.
From this committee endorsement package?
Oh, no, sorry.
All right. Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak to this, but since it was lifted, I want to, as the, as the council member that represents or that sits on the Active Grimsby Advisory Committee, I wanted to thank these individuals for all their time. COVID's been a very difficult year, and obviously during the year with COVID, many things change in people's lives. So I wanted to thank these people for all the time and effort they put on this committee.
Thank you, Counsel Ritchie. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Vardy. Resolve that the Act of Grimsby Advisory Committee Council Endorsement Package dated March 22nd, 2021 be approved. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Up next, we have adoption of the previous minutes. We have Public Library Board minutes of February 10th, 2021, Committee of Adjustment minutes of February 9th, 2021, Committee of Adjustment minutes of March 16th, 2021, Heritage Advisory Committee minutes of March 9th, 2021, Grimsby DIA minutes of December 4th, 2019, Grimsby DIA minutes of, I think that's, oh, yeah, so that's no 2009. Oh, that's the annual general meeting. All right, that's the, not a typo. Grimsby DIA minutes of November 4th, 2020, Grimsby Green Advisory Committee meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2021, Active Advisory Committee meeting, meeting minutes of March 17th, 2021. Anything to be lifted, Counsel Bothwell?
Can I lift, well, I don't actually think I need to lift them, but the Committee of Adjustment minutes of February the 9th. I understand that there was, I'd like staff to put an information request into staff to provide the status of 11 Lakeview. That was one of the applications that was defeated, and I understand that it has proceeded to LPAT. So I'd like the clerk to note an information request on that, on that item for staff to come back with the status of 11 Lakeview.
That will be noted. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I was wondering if I could lift five E and five F, the two Grimsby DIA minutes for discussion?
Do, will we do those first or last? First, all right. Yes, well, we can have discussion on those two DIA minutes that they're lifted now.
Thank you, worship.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you. Since you and Counsel Frank sit on that committee, maybe you can answer some of my questions. One, I, I was kind of, I thought it was a typo, too, at first when I saw December 4th, 2019. In fact, I called the, called the town clerk to find out, and yes, it was the annual general meeting. So that being said, is December 2020 the annual general meeting, or did you have it in another month? And if it wasn't the annual general meeting, do we know where the December 2020 minutes are? And I noticed on the F on the Grimsby DIA minutes of November 4th, there was a suggestion that you might need a part-time administrator. And I just wanted to say from my perspective, I would endorse that, that we need to get some help there, because I think you guys are all too busy. So those are my comments, but I, I would like to ask the clerk to give clarification on that one for December 4th, 2019, because I'm a little puzzled. If we're not going to see the annual general meeting for another year, I'm just wondering where, where the transparency is there. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frank, did you want to take that one?
I think that the clerk has already spoken to the chair. Anyways, the, yeah, the, Counsel Dunstall was right, the AGM minutes usually are passed at the next AGM meeting. But there were a couple of things at the last, at the AGM meeting, which you should know about, which is coming, I believe, to the Committee of the Whole on the 29th of March, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, because there's been two replacement directors added to the board as a result of some resignations. So, so that, I think, yeah, so that's the way that works from what I know from a procedural perspective. So you will see the 2020 minutes on the 29th of March. Sarah, you want to comment on that? I believe you had a conversation with, with the chair.
Yes, Sarah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in discussion with the Chair of DIA, I was notified that the Grimsby, the AGM minutes are approved at the next AGM. And also, there were a few at the 2020 AGM minutes that, a meeting that required endorsement from council. So that will come kind of as a CEP to council on the 29th.
Yeah, it's, it's a typical AGM Counselor Dunstall, where the financial records are red, and Stephen from, from, from town gives us an idea of the budget for the following year. That type, it's pretty standard, it's not too much complicated things on there. But anyways, you'll see it at the next meeting.
And that's not how I understand it from the clarification from the clerk. But if you're, are you saying we'll, we will see the minutes of the annual general meeting at a next committee of the whole?
Not the-
Or we'll see some excerpts of it?
You'll see excerpts of it.
Yeah, so you wait a whole year before you approve your annual general meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's-
That's always, that's always been the case.
Yeah, that's the way the procedure is read, and that's the way it's, it's been done since day one.
Wow. Well, I used to complain on the-
Well, so-
Yeah.
I know that it's, it's, you know, to take a year to hear what, what happened at the meeting is a long time, but-
I mean, it's, 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 it's redundant a year later. I mean, there's nothing, nothing that can be done, but I, yeah, okay, well.
It's procedural.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I, I think that's somewhere where having standardized terms of reference would probably go further to changing that and, and, and tying that up, because, because it is problematic when, when a material doesn't come to council and, and adding two very good directors to the board. Really, we had to, we have to do it outside the procedure, so the procedure's not set up in a way that, that, that transfers information in, in a transparent and open way. So we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, you're saying, for, for example, in the annual general meeting, December 4th, 2019, there was a comment that your reserves had been depleted. So we're going to wait another year to find out if you still have depleted reserves, or they're okay now. It's, but by that time-
Well, they're okay now, but anyway.
I know you can tell us. Generally speaking, do, do the, all, all the, all the owners of buildings downtown know that- owners of buildings downtown know that their levy is going in, you know, to, you know, is it a clearing transfer? So I think, yeah, I think it would be nice to be able to get those terms of reference fixed, so we could have some more clarification on those.
Yeah, your point, your point, and it's something that I brought up, knowing that we, because when I saw the agenda and I saw 2019, I questioned it as well, so, so anyways.
Thank you very much.
You need to look at that again, I agree.
Okay, very good.
Counsel Vane.
Two quick questions. I had a couple of phone calls from people who had not been notified of the AGM, and I was just wondering how it was advertised, because a couple of people, as I say, I understand it was more than two, I shouldn't say a couple, a few people, had wanted to attend and didn't know about it until after it was over. So my first question is, how was it advertised?
Counsel Frake?
If they're a member, they go onto a membership list, and that membership list is advised. So I'm very surprised if someone is, didn't get notified, or just didn't read their email or whatever. I don't know why they didn't know. And I'd be interested to know the names and pass them on to the chair, so we can figure out why they weren't advised if they're actual members. If that, that's, I can't say any more than that, to be honest, but I'm surprised that any members weren't, or that weren't advised.
So every business along Main Street is notified by email?
Yes, they are, and the, that list is also, is also resident in the Finance Department, because they are the guys that actually bill the different businesses for their, for their levy, for their, for their budget of the DIA, so.
Okay.
Clear list.
I'll, I'll ask the person if they want to get on the list. The one, one that brought it to my attention anyways. The second question is, my understanding is the terms of reference call for two members of count, two counselors and the mayor. If the mayor chooses to sit as he can, when are we going to be replacing the second counselor position?
Those terms run for four years. Of course, unless you want to change them, Randy.
No, 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 I'm saying there's supposed to be two counselors, and then the mayor can sit in on any meeting he wants. We only have yourself on there. When are we going to add the second counselor?
I'll clarify that, because I am actually replacing Counsel Vane, yourself. That I was put on the committee because you were unable to continue on the DIA, so.
But you are allowed to sit on any committee and attend any meeting in your role as mayor. The terms of reference specifically call for two members of council in the counselor position, is my understanding.
Now, the key there is two members of council. The, the DIA is a different advisory board than, it's not really an advisory board, actually it's a corporation. So it's, so it's actually a little bit different than the other procedures. I think you and I had this discussion, Counsel Vane, the last year or year ago about this, about the, about these particular rules and procedures. It's a little bit different than the other committees. Two members of council.
Okay, well, somebody else brought it to my attention, that's why I'm asking it, so, okay, I'll go review them myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vane. Right, so you have a resolution for those two? All right, so I need a mover and seconder for the balance of the agenda, or minutes. Counsel Dunstall, mover. Counsel Cadwell, seconder. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, second by Counsel Cadwell, resolved that the following be received. Public Library Board minutes of February 10th, 2021, Committee of Adjustment minutes of February 9th, 2021, Committee of Adjustment minutes of March 16th, 2021, Heritage Advisory Committee minutes of March 9th, 2021, Grinsby Green Advisory Committee meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2021, Active Advisory Committee meeting minutes of March 17th, 2021. On favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the DIA minutes. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, second by Counsel Frake. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, second by Counsel Frake, resolved that the Grinsby DIA minutes of December 4th, 2019, and Grinsby DIA minutes of November 4th, 2020 be received. On favor? That's carried. Up next, we have written delegations from Annette and Dawn Gibbons and Ursula Pellicero, mover and seconder. Moved by Counsel Cadwell, second by Counsel Frake. Moved by Counsel Cadwell, second by Counsel Frake, resolved that the written delegations from Annette and Dawn Gibbons and Ursula Pellicero be received. On favor? All right, that's carried. Up next, we have our consent agenda. Counsel Vardy.
Yes, I'd like to lift 6.2 Parks Recreation and Culture Consent.
Counsel Bothwell?
I'd like, thank you, Mayor, I'd like to lift 7.3A, the Public Works Consent for the Sanitary Sewer Flow.
All right, so we need a mover and seconder for the rest of the consent agenda. Counsel Dunstall, Counsel Bothwell. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, second by Counsel Bothwell, resolved that the Committee of the Whole hereby approves the following items, and the various consent items be approved on the recommendation as contained therein. FIN 21-04-2020 Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Members of Council and Council Appointments to Boards and Other Bodies. PA 21-10 Interim Control Bylaw Extension. On favor? That's carried. Now we move to item 8.1A, Integrity Commissioner Investigation Report, IC 11924-1120, and IC 12209-1220, and IC 12121220. Welcome, Michael.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead. We're both welcoming each other, so there we go.
Thank you. Yeah, so thank you for having me this evening, Mayor and members of council. As noted, my name is Michael Maynard, and with respect to the report that's before you, I was delegated by the Integrity Commissioner to conduct the investigations and to prepare that report, subject to his review and approval. As the mayor noted, it is with respect to three complaints, with the complaint numbers noted there in the report, and as just noted by the mayor. Those three complaints were received in fairly short succession, the first on November 3rd of 2020, and during the process of the investigation for that complaint, two more were received on December 11th, 2020. We found the complaints to be substantively very similar with a lot of, a lot of overlap, and so we proceeded to join those complaints and produce a single report in order to preserve some resources really for the town and some time, because producing three separate reports, of course, would take longer than producing one report dealing with three items. Counsel will also note that the second of the three complaints was actually withdrawn during the middle of it being processed. So that was not considered. The remaining two matters that were considered, IC 11924-1120 and 12212-1220, were fully processed, investigated, and resulting in the report that's now before you, which I now table for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Questions from Counsel? Counsel Dunstall?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Michael, for your fine investigation. It was very thorough and very comprehensive, and I'm happy to see the results. Let me say, I'm just looking at my notes here. There were three separate complaints, two from residents, and it was over this mapping situation, which was brought forward by one of our members of council, and I think with the mapping and the interim control bylaw, I think a lot of people were concerned and upset. And from my perspective, as the past Chair of the Heritage Committee too, not knowing what the, how this mapping came to be, left a lot of questions out there for, for myself and for the public at large. And so for you to do this investigation, it's very clear to see who did the mapping, who was involved, and who wasn't involved, and so it's, it created a very clear picture now. And I'm very happy to see the results are in favor of Counsel Frake and not against him, because that being said, you know, it's, it's not a pleasant experience when you're found guilty of something like this. So I'm happy to see the results, happy to see your investigation was very thorough and very comprehensive, and I'm happy to know that, you know, it brought forth a lot of questions that people had, and now they can read the report and understand how things all evolved. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Vane.
Hello, Michael, welcome.
Thank you.
Couple of quick questions for you. You, you said a couple of times when you were giving your explanation there, you said "we." I was under the impression you had done this investigation. Who is "we"?
That is correct. I did do the investigation, but as I noted also in my introduction, I was doing it as a delegate of the Integrity Commissioner, who reviewed my process and report, and also signed the report. And so while I was the one that actually did the process of investigation and wrote the report, I use the term "we" simply to denote that I was acting on behalf of the Integrity Commissioner.
Are you not an Integrity Commissioner?
I am an Integrity Commissioner, but I am not the Integrity Commissioner for the Town of Grimsby.
Okay. Okay, sorry, that just throws me a little bit. Okay, the, could you do me a favor, and just for the benefit of my own interest here, and this is a legitimate question, can you define a pecuniary interest?
Yes.
Around my house, let's say, what would be considered a pecuniary interest around me, my house that I own? What is a pecuniary interest?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, and I did touch on this in the report, a pecuniary interest is an interest that usually involves money, something that is of financial value or economic value, whether that's in the positive or the negative. That's generally, very broadly speaking, what a pecuniary interest is defined as. And I'm not exactly, I don't know what page, I couldn't refer you just off the top of my head to center in the report, but I did deal with that in the report.
The reason I ask is that some people have questioned me, and you know what, I, I'm kind of glad you didn't find anybody at fault here, because it's, it's not a very pleasant experience, as Counsel Dunstall said, but I'm just confused, because if somebody were to build, if I'm living in Vaughan, say, for example, and somebody decides to build Canada's Wonderland behind my house, that's going to affect me and all my neighbors, obviously, but is that not a pecuniary interest?
Well, it could be potentially, but, you know, it's hard to say, I mean, it's hard to say, how, how close are you to it? What is the impact going to be on your property directly? I mean, it's kind of a hypothetical question that I can't really answer.
Well, then more, a more direct question, and again, I'm not trying to find faults here, your report is done, and I'm not pursuing, others are, but I'm not. My question is, is that some homes that were related to counselors, and I say that in a plural form, one counselor chose to declare a conflict of interest because the property of their family was bordered on Main Street. The second counselor chose not to, and his property boundaries on Main Street.
Right.
And in the heritage committees, as well as talking to real estate agents, as well as reading articles, every one of those people said that by designating an area heritage designation, that the value will change. Some people said up, some people said down. The point is changed. What research did you do? Because obviously, I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, and I wasn't doing a lot of research, I was just curious more than anything else. That's why I reached out to all these people and watched the Heritage Committee meeting. You're the only one out of like eight people that are in this field that have said what you're saying, and I'm just curious as to how you got there. Because the property value, and again, I'm not trying to cause an issue, I want to understand, I truly want to understand. But the, the property value of this individual would have been impacted had that designation gone through, regardless to whether somebody drew a line in the map or whatever, they're still in the same area. I'm not debating the map, I'm debating the issue, like, I just, I'm not sure how you got there. And that's, I guess that's my big issue. I understand some of the comments you made in your report and all that, but I just don't get it. It just doesn't make, you're talking to somebody who's right on the Main Street, right in the area, and another counselor is 100 feet down the street, his family's 100 feet down the street. He was given, I guess, guidance by somebody, he must have, I don't think he would do it on his own, I mean, I haven't asked him, I should ask him probably, but the other counselor decided to declare a conflict, and yet you find that this is not a conflict when it's directly right there, and the value would have changed had that designation gone through. So.
Just a clarification, Counsel Vane. It's up to the counselor to declare a conflict, it's not up to anyone else.
But I'm asking.
That is a clarification, so.
That's fine, but I'm asking how this investigator got to this report. Having done investigations for 30 years, I do them differently than most people, so I just want to know how he got there, that's all, that's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to be obstructive or anything here, I just want to understand, because I don't understand right now. And a lot of people have said that to me, they don't understand. So I just want clarification from the investigator, that's all.
Sure. So with respect to the comparison that you raised between one counselor whose parents are on Main Street and the counselor who was the subject of this investigation, there is a distinction between their properties. The matter that was before me included a map in which the subject of the investigation, Counsel Frake's property, was not included in that area. So we're talking about inclusion in an area that would impact on property value. And in fact, I discussed that in the report, saying perhaps if a property was included, it may in fact have an impact. What that impact is, I don't know. That wasn't the question before me. The question before me was whether or not that particular property in those particular circumstances was going to be impacted by a study. And I found that it was unlikely, and in the alternative, I said if it was, that there are exceptions set out under the MCIA, which would, which would kick in.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate that. I don't, I don't agree, I'll be honest, I don't agree. And I don't think, based on investigations that I've done for 30 years, this is, the way that I find the IC does things is different, is way different than I have ever seen any investigation done, but I respect your opinion, and I thank you for your time and your clarification.
Counsel Frake, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Michael, and thank you very much for a very, very thorough. I don't think I've seen an IC report that was, has been more investigated, reviewed than this one. And you've certainly quoted every case there is possible to back up your, your facts and your decision. Of course, we have a lot of smart people on council that think are lawyers, but, but they're not, they're not integrity commissioners. But I, I think that, I didn't know where this was going to end up, I had no idea. I just felt that I was not, and am not, obviously, conflicted here. And I don't feel any different than I did before this has all started. But thank you for a very thorough report. I hope every report we get going forward is as thorough as yours. And anyways, it's, it's nice to be, to have this before us and now behind us at the same time.
it's nice to be, to have this before us and now behind us at the same time. So I hope everyone down in council got a chance to read this report, see how much work went into it, and how much investigation has gone into it. So going forward, we can all maybe quote this report in our own defense at times. So, you know, that's, because I think that's what we're pressing going forward for a lot of us, and thank you, Michael, very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you, Mr. Maynard, I think it was a very fulsome review and an excellent report. I especially appreciated your commentary on, when we talk about the definition of when a pecuniary interest applies or could possibly exist, that it needs to be very specific and definable, and then you quoted Justice Braid in the matter of York, et al., versus Harris. Where possible future outcomes do not qualify as pecuniary interest under the Act, there must be a real issue of actual conflict, or at least a reasonable assumption that conflict will occur, and the pecuniary interest must be definable and real rather than hypothetical. And then you go on to talk about, as you mentioned, the MCIA exceptions, which I think Integrity Commissioner Harnick also raised in one of our other Integrity Commissioner complaints, where we talked about where a decision or something that council is deciding on affects the common good or the larger community of Grimsby as a whole, and it talks in there where you mention, in the present case, the exception in your section four J is a particular interest, where it states section five and five point two do not apply to a pecuniary interest in any matter that a member may have, and J by reason of the member having a pecuniary interest, which is an interest in common with electors generally. And then I think you, you go into more on Justice Braid's decision about where, if there's something in common with the electors within the, the area of jurisdiction, it doesn't need to include all of them, but that has to be considered when you're looking at the conflict. So maybe you could just elaborate a bit on that, the common interest, and when we're making decisions where it could affect my whole neighborhood, where there's a development across from me, and they are putting at a couple big ones there, and, you know, I have a similar interest to the rest of the electors in this, in this ward, as to what that particular development, the impact on my, on my property versus their property. So that's why I can continue to test that, otherwise I'd be excluded from everything in my ward, is that correct? If you could help, maybe just explain a little bit.
Yeah, so I have to be careful not to comment too specifically on your individual circumstances, and in fact, if you do have a question about whether, whether that exception could apply to you, then the, the best thing to do would be to submit in writing a request for advice to the Integrity Commissioner to consider. But generally speaking, if I'm sort of speaking broadly about that exception, the idea behind it is, is that yes, if, if it is a matter in which a significant number, it doesn't have to be everybody in the community, but if it's a significant number or a significant segment of the population would be impacted by a particular decision, then yes, that exception could likely apply. And again, it has to be taken on a case-by-case basis, you have to evaluate exactly what the circumstances are. I obviously did in this case, and I explained my reasoning, why I thought it would apply here, and what I said in this, in this particular case is, it's, it's a fairly large geographical area that encompasses a lot of properties and a lot of residents, and it's an issue which, of course, would impact a, a great number of them. So I felt that it was a matter that would apply under that particular exception. But again, it would have to be, each case is, is different, and would have to be judged on that, but that's the general principle behind it.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful, thanks for my-
You're welcome.
Counselor Sharp?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Michael, there's a question that I have. So first, I want to talk about section seventeen of our Code of Conduct, and it's the conflict of interest, where it says, members shall avoid conflict of interest, both pecuniary and non-pecuniary, but it says also, members are encouraged to seek guidance from the Integrity Commissioner when they become aware that they may have a conflict between their responsibilities to the public as a member and any other interest pecuniary or non-pecuniary. So-
Yes.
On, on around October 18th, 2020, I contacted Charles Harnick, our Integrity Commissioner, to ask if, my parents live on Main Street East, and so I asked him if, if I was in conflict of interest, and, and he answered me-
Yes.
Yes, that I am in conflict of interest. And so what you just explained was that if it, if it, if it impacts a large group, this we're talking four kilometers of Main Street East, it's, it's half the town. And so the Integrity Commissioner, Mr. Harnick, he said to me, and I'll just quote part of it, that given the fact that you quite properly declared a conflict in 2019, I believe you must do so again. At minimum, your parents would not be able to obtain a building permit for one year if indeed Main Street East is declared a heritage district. Further restrictions may be applied to their property if it is declared a heritage district. It would be anyone's perception, perhaps not reality, that the first and foremost, you would want to act in a manner that would protect your parents' interest. I also remind you that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act refers to pecuniary interests, which can be both direct and indirect. If your parents' pecuniary interest is affected, either in a positive or negative way, you would have a conflict of interest if you were to take part in the decision-making process. Accordingly, you must declare, my advice is to declare a conflict. So, so I've heard a little bit of talk here about like, so first of all, this isn't my house, I live in Ward Four, I'm over like behind the, Grimsby Handi dealership, and it's like 10 kilometers on the other side of town, I, I don't live there, and my parents live there, and-
Yes.
So, so I contacted, our Code of Conduct suggests, encourages us to contact, to support public confidence, it encourages us to contact the Integrity Commissioner and to ask, and I mean, in this case, a report was done, and I'm sure it cost a bunch of money, but, but had the member, or any member who, who thinks they may be in conflict, had they contacted the Integrity Commissioner, you get a half hour phone call, and then you get a response in writing, which will, will give advice to the, to the fact of whether you may or may not be. And in this case, Charles Harnick, who signed this report, said that, that I, that his advice was that I do declare, but, but now I'm hearing that if it affects a large number of people, that, that you wouldn't be required to declare, or so, I wonder why that didn't apply to me, and, and why, I mean, Counselor Bothwell asked about her property, I presume she's talking about the Casablanca Development, Casablanca Hotel, and so how come the fact that it affects, this affects a lot of people, we're talking four kilometers, Grimsby only has about 10 kilometers of, of Main Street. So how come it affects everyone, and that, that like nulls or negates the conflict when, when my interest is not even direct, it's indirect, we're talking my parents, and, but it also affects all of their neighbors, every single one of them, and a lot of people that I know in town. And so the advice was given that I was to, to declare a conflict and register it with the clerk. And so I find there's a little bit of, of contradiction between those. And so I also question, because we were not just voting on whether to have a study, we were voting on, on, on the boundary of the study. And so being included in the study, or, or being at the edge of the study, it's like, because we're voting on the boundary of the study, a person might be compelled to vote yes to something that doesn't include them, where they might be compelled to vote no to something that does include them. And so, so I wonder, was, was the boundary considered, and why wasn't the, the fact that we were deciding on the boundary, even though I, I'm not sure who made the boundary, but we were deciding on it? Why wasn't that considered? Sorry, that's a couple of questions, you can unpack that.
Right. So first of all, with respect to your own personal circumstances, this is your parents' house, I can't really comment on whatever the Integrity Commissioner's advice to you was, I didn't give it to you, I haven't seen the advice, I haven't seen all the circumstances. I am aware that your parents own a property on Main Street that was included in the area, and that your pecuniary interest in that property would be considered to be a deemed pecuniary interest, because it is the pecuniary interest of an immediate family member. What the Integrity Commissioner's advice was with respect to yourself having to declare, I honestly couldn't answer, it wasn't, it wasn't something that I dealt with, it's not before me, and I also don't think this would be the appropriate forum to deal with that question. In terms of voting on the boundary, I would suggest you that, I mean, that question wasn't before me, the matter that was before me was that there was obviously a question before you, before council, to vote on a boundary that was proposed, and that's what was voted on. To say that, well, maybe if the boundary was different, or he could have voted no, or whatever, that's a hypothetical question, and that wasn't before me.
Thank you for, just, just thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maynard, I, I hope I pronounced your name properly, thank you for the report, I actually enjoyed the reading. I, I really like how you laid out the, the questions and the tasks for, for everything, and, you know, and I think that it is what it is, and I, I commend you, I thought you did an excellent job. I have a couple of questions here. One was just on page 24 of 4.8, you stated that, and it's, it's in quotations, it says the counselor advised the HCD study proposal was drafted by her in consultation with the community. Did you ever get a definition of what the community means? I see, I only ask because I see it in quotations.
No, that, that wasn't really a question before me, I wasn't here to investigate what Counselor Bothwell had done, I simply wanted to know whether Counselor Bothwell had, had consulted with Counselor Frake prior to producing this, and the answer was no.
Excellent, thank you. So, thank you very much. And then the only other thing, too, is I know that you're, you're back what Counselor, Counselor Sharp was saying about the boundaries, and I know that you were given the map and stuff. I'm just curious if you had watched the Heritage Committee meeting before, the one just before December 21st, and I know that the map was not changed, but in that, that meeting, it was, and don't get me wrong, I'm not going anywhere, because if you actually read the tests, there's other reasons why, but I'm just curious, on that meeting, though, it was defined that the boundary should include all properties that front on Main Street East. And as we all know, multiple properties can have dual frontage, especially the corner lots. So however, though, it still didn't meet some of the other tests that you put in there, but I just wanted to say that, yeah, that bound, the map boundary should have been updated for you to review. So I don't think you got the updated map.
Like I said, I have what was before me in the complaint, so.
Thank you, Counselor Vane?
Um, two, sorry, one comment, one question. When you do an IC Commissioner complaint investigation, do you actually investigate, or do you just review the information, as you just said, that's before you, and act more like a judge than an investigator? I'm just curious on that role, because this is a question I've had before on the other investigations.
Right. So primarily, the role is to review and assess the information that is before us, however, as you'll see from this report, I, I did a bit of digging myself, I spoke to staff, I spoke to Counselor Bothwell to gather some information that, that I needed, but, I mean, that's really as far as it goes, the, the investigation is limited to the, to the items that have put, been put before me. So when I say investigate, I'm, I'm not investigating like a prosecutor would, I'm not looking around, digging, trying to find whether other infractions happened. Certain matters are put before me, and those are what I consider, and if I need to seek third-party evidence with respect to those, to clarify matters for myself as I go through the investigation, then that's what I will do.
Okay, last thing is just a comment. Counselor Frake made a comment about legal, I, I did speak to two other lawyers, one who is an Integrity Commissioner, and they didn't agree, so that, just to clarify that for Counselor Frake, because I'm not quite sure who he was suggesting, because, you know, whatever, but I just wanted to make that you aware of that. And again, I'm not talking to you on a personal level, I'm speaking, Mr. Frake.
Counselor Frake?
You on a personal level there, Michael, I do appreciate what you've done, and I think the report is fine, and again, I'm not trying to find fault or create issues with anybody here, I just want to understand the process, because up until now, I haven't really understood it well, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your fulsome report, Michael, and have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Need a mover and seconder to receive the report? Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the Integrity Commissioner investigation report IC 11924-1120, and IC 122091220, and IC 122121220 be received. Recorded vote?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Seth Carey?
Now we move to report, CORP 21-01 whistleblower policy, the standalone policy. Dan, welcome, and Dasha from Legal is going to be here as well. Just waiting for Dan to get in.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Dan, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
And Dasha, are you here yet, or?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, hi, Dasha, hello again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Very good.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, good evening to the members of council, I'm Dan Rumor, I'm the interim HR manager, I'm here this evening to speak to the standalone whistleblower policy. Further to council's motion, just a bit of background, we've conducted our research and our due diligence, collected key benchmark data, and reviewed best practices in order to establish a standalone policy that would be suitable for the town of Grimsby. So I do have a quick presentation to cover some of the key elements of the council's motions and points of interest, so I'm going to just bring that up. But just as, as an overview, our whistleblower, whistleblower policy is, there are really three main components to whistleblower policy. It's truly to provide employees with the ability to disclose acts of serious wrongdoing in respect to town operations. In addition to that, we want to protect employees from any reprisal for disclosing that serious wrongdoing. If a serious wrongdoing is disclosed or deemed qualifying, an investigation is undertaken. So those are the three critical parts as when you're looking at a whistleblower policy, and keeping in mind confidentiality is a critical foundational component in administering the whistleblower policy. And that's where that is. Further to that, the other side, based on best practices and extensive research, it's important to understand issues that are not to be addressed through whistleblower policy, which may include and pertain to personal personnel issues such as workplace bullying or harassment, labor relations issues that may involve grievances, other issues such as disputes between an employer or the organization, such as vacation time or other administrative issues, or also involving simple mismanagement such as poor supervision or so on, in areas such as employee performance management issues, or even individual health and safety issues. The key with a whistleblower policy is not to replace other established legislative policies such as workplace harassment or workplace violence. As we conducted our extensive research, we did reach out to various numerous municipalities across Ontario where possible, including other tier one, but we also collected relevant benchmark information and data from 12 Niagara municipalities. As you can see, seven of Niagara municipalities have an active standalone policy. All are employee-based whistleblower policies, and three of the Niagara municipality, municipality, sorry, have anonymous reporting function with only internal process. And looking at the data that we did collect from the municipalities, none of the municipalities have a third-party reporting mechanism. This was essential information and benchmarking data used in developing a whistleblower policy for the town of Grimsby that would be relevant and best suited for the organization. So based on council's motion- So based on council's motion, there are three areas of consideration we reviewed, that being scope, anonymous reporting, and third-party reporting. So based on best practice, and again, based on our benchmark data, whistleblower policy for the town of Grimsby should only be an employee, sorry, only be for employee disclosures. Therefore, an employee-based policy for both options. This is considered foundational in the scope of the policy and is based on evidence-based data. So once again, all whistleblower policies in the Niagara municipalities are employee-based. Second consideration is anonymous reporting. Again, anonymous reporting option can have its benefits. However, the organization needs to weigh the benefits to the associated considerations and risks. So giving the employees the option to remain anonymous when disclosing serious wrongdoing, yes, can be helpful. I'm building trust in a whistleblower process, but it also may encourage people to come forward. So those are some benefits. However, we must also acknowledge some various obstacles and issues that do come forward. It's more difficult to investigate follow-up questions, lack of information that can be obtained. It also allows for a higher level of bad faith or potentially targeted, targeted complaints of being facetious, frivolous in nature against coworkers. Disclosures sometimes cannot be confirmed as an employee. In addition to that, we can't hold employees accountable for untrue reports or disclosures that may come forward. And lastly, employees not able to receive the same support and protection available. So keeping this all in mind, many organizations have chosen not to include anonymous reporting option if their whistleblower policy due to the associated challenges in qualifying disclosures. Third consideration is third-party reporting. Providing a third-party reporting mechanism from the outset, from an employee to file a whistleblower disclosure and have a disclosure qualified or not by a third party can be costly, is not considered common practice for similar organizations. For example, if we had a qualified service provider, it can cost between five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars per complaint, just from a handling fee perspective. That does not include any investigation fees that would follow. So having a third-party service option suggests that there can also be a low level of trust in an established internal whistleblower reporting process if put in place. And once again, no Niagara municipalities provide an option for third-party reporting for employees. The key here also is to remember, external investigations can still be performed on qualified disclosures filed through an internal process. So again, from a staff recommendation, recommendation perspective, we do have a legal review, and throughout the due diligence and research process, as well as in the preparation of the recommendations, we have consulted with our town's legal counsel with the, on, with the background in investigations and policies and integrity and workplace issues. And we have verified that our proposal is consistent with best practices and in legal compliance. We are staff are putting forward recommendation two to be approved that best meets the needs of the organization and the employees, and is also supported by best practices, benchmarking, evidence-based and research data. We have a team here to answer any questions. Your free counselors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Dan. Questions from council? Counselor Vardy.
Thank you very much, Dan, for that, that presentation. And I really appreciate the clarification of what it's for and what it isn't for. My only concern with option two, or my major concern with option two is what if the problem is the head of the steak, so to speak? A little double entendre, but meaning, what if the problem was the CAO? Then what happens then when the problem go eventually goes up to the CAO? So there's no option that, that allows for a third party in the event of that being the problem. And that, that's my major concern. Maybe you'd like to, to address that. And I know in federal government, where I worked for thirty years, all whistleblower policy was third-party for that, for that very reason. So maybe you could speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, if I heard your question, question correctly, if there was an issue with the CEO in regards to whistleblowing, that would go forward to the town clerk. They would receive the complaint and the allegation and bring that forward to council.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could just follow up with that. I think that, you know, and this is just, just sort of the hypothetical, but these are the things that we have to prepare for. I, I think having to bring a complaint forward to council against your boss puts you in a very, puts one in a very unenviable position. And you know, one that might be so unenviable that they might try to avoid it. And, and that would be somewhat understandable. Or if, say, one was looking to protect somebody, without the third-party option, you can run into those problems. And I, I still think we need, and, and while for the, the general course of problems, I don't, I don't see an issue with the flow of information, but with, should it be something that was an issue at the very top? That, that really puts everybody in a very precarious position, the employee, the clerk. So I think we need to find a way to address that.
Dan, any comments on that, or?
Just me noted. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Cadwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'll hit my lower hand here. Get that down. There we go. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And thank you, Dan, for the report. I did a little bit of research on my own. I reached out to, I'm just going to say some other people that are involved with high-level organizations. And, and they, they basically, my discussion was very common to what you have put here, Dan, and, and your staff, and again, I thank you for that. I particularly liked the, the chart that you showed us on page five with all the other, other municipalities, including the Niagara region. And I think we're, we're with this option two, we're right in line with everybody else. So I just want to say again, thank you, and I will be supporting option number two. Thank you.
Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, thank you for the presentation. Long time coming. It's, we waited a year to get this far. And I don't think we're quite there yet. I, you mentioned best-in-class in your, your presentation. And your best-in-class is measured against twelve municipalities in the Niagara region. There's four hundred and forty municipalities in Ontario, and I can assure you, they all don't have the same view of, you know, having, you know, a third party as, as a, they have a third party, a lot of them have a third party choice, actually. So the problem I have overall with, with, with both these options, and option two is one that's on the table, is that I think the employee should have a choice of where he go, he or she goes. You know, not that he has to go here if it's that person, or there if it's that person, they should have a choice. And, you know, I mean, you mentioned small municipalities, I mean, they don't normally have third parties. Well, maybe it's about time we did. Because with small communities and small organizations, it's very difficult to become confidential, to have information like this confidential. So, and people talk, you know, people are friends and associates up, up the line, down the line. And I think that to be able to guarantee confidentiality in a small environment is very, very difficult. So I, I would like to see, you know, across, across the board here, I like to see, I like to see that the employees or whoever has, have, they have a choice. I mean, not, they don't have to go to CEO, they don't have to go to HR, they don't have to go to clerk. They have a choice to go to a third party if they see fit, if they feel more comfortable doing that. And I don't think that's a big thing outside the fact of cost. And this is not about cost. This is about protecting employees, about protecting the organization. So I, I think that's, small change needs to be in there. And I'll quote our, our own CAO's words from, from, from a year ago. And he said, "We wanted to leapfrog the competition. We want to be better than the competition." And I think he was talking about the competition in Niagara. So, so our competition are the other municipalities. We want to be better, not the same. We want to be better. So I'm suggesting that we look very seriously at putting in a choice for the employees in terms of whether they want or not to go to a third party. You know, they need, they need to be, you know, they want to be, and they have the choice of remaining anonymous as well. I mean, this is all about protecting the people that are complaining. This is what this is all about. If we don't do that, if we can't do that on, you know, unequivocally, then we're failing at what we're trying to do here. I, I think I got my message across, and, and again, hopefully, we will, I'm suggesting we go back and add some kind of revision that we give employees that choice, and we appoint a third party to be that choice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't even want to comment on that, but, or, Dasha, is it Dasha? I assume you're with Mayor Burles?
That's correct, Counselor.
You weren't introduced. Okay, so that's my comments, and I welcome any comments back, and I thank the mayor for being able to speak. Thank you.
Comments from either Dasha or Dan?
Yeah, we'll make note of that, Counselor. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Vane.
Yes, a couple of comments, please. Thank you. First of all, my biggest concern, and I've seen it far too many times, way too many times, and not only in workplace, but in the legal system everywhere else. Confidentiality, as Dan himself has said, one of the biggest concerns is bad faith complaints. I'm all about protecting people. We have to remember that council is the final say. We, the CAO works for us. So there are other options people have if they are uncomfortable going through the process. Just to clarify, Counselor Vardy made a comment about the department she worked for. In my department, it's actually HR that handles complaints, not a third party. We have options to bring in mediators and stuff, but it's not straight across the federal government like that. There are other options, depending on the severity of it. If it's a criminal offense, a sexual assault or something, you always have the option to the police. The people have the option to go into the lawyers. You have the option to go to Human Rights Commission, Labor Board, so on and so forth. So there are lots of options. I'm very, very concerned about the cons that, that Dan brought forth as regards to a third-party thing. It's not cost, I don't care. I, as most of the staff at the town hall will tell you, I'm one of the biggest proponents for staff, so I think option number two is the way to go. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I appreciate the time put into this. I, I do think, though, that we could do better. I think we could, by restricting it just to the Niagara municipalities, we've overlooked a number of other municipalities that have implemented them successfully. Such, now, mind you, some are bigger cities. We're looking at Mississauga, Greater Sudbury Berry. But Richmond Hill in twenty seventeen also did a research on, when they were looking at tightening up their whistleblower policy, and they, they did some research. And Halton Region as well has anonymous and third-party. Hamilton, no. Mississauga, yes, and third-party. Oakville, yes, and a hotline. Toronto, yes. The Auditor General, Vaughan, yes, reporting to third-party. So those are just a number of other ones that have found that there was, they wanted to serve their employees the best way they could to make them feel safe, secure, and listened to when they had a complaint, and they wanted to provide the mechanism for them to do that reporting without fear of reprisal. And that third-party mechanism does that. And the Mississauga terms of reference on it clearly state why they, they put this in place. And it's because they value having their employees feel that they can communicate those concerns safely. I think that we're not, you know, to do, do diligence and really do the best we can for our employees, we need to provide the third-party and the anonymous mechanisms. These, these other parties that have put them in place have perfected it. And I think Mississauga had twenty in the two years that they piloted that ten were legitimate, ten were, had been ruled out. So they do a vetting. An anonymous, you get a number, you get tracked that way. By the, a little bit of the investigation at the initial stages, they will define whether or not there's, it merits moving forward. Ten didn't merit moving forward, ten did. So, I mean, you're going to get those that maybe don't merit it, but they will be winnowed out. There is a process to do that. There's a process to remain anonymous, and there's a process to help a third party effectively come to, to solve some of these problems that staff feel they need to bring forward, and they don't know how. And the worst thing is to have staff feel that they can't go anywhere, and they can't talk to anyone. And that is a morale buster. And if we can't meet that need, we're, we've got an ongoing problem that's just stewing. So I think, I really think option one, I, I would like to do, ask the clerk if we could possibly separate the two for voting, option one and two. And I would like to do an amendment to one, if possible, to just change the wording a bit to allow for it to be a pilot, a one-year pilot. So after anonymous reporting option on a one-year pilot basis, and then with a, with an RFP for a service provider cost to be circulated, so that the costs, which there are rough, I've seen two companies that do third-party vetting. Clearview connects and Integrity Counts. I think Integrity Counts is cheaper, so it would also, an RFP would also provide council with a bit of the idea of the cost. But I'd like to see if we can amend that to do it as a pilot. That gives us an opportunity to find out whether it's working, not working, whether it needs to be refined, or we go back to option two. So if the clerk is able to do that, and then with, with an RFP to be circulated for service provider costs for council approval. I'd like to see that. So I, I feel very, very strongly about this. I think we can't limit ourselves just to the twelve municipalities. A few of them were brave enough to come forward and, and get them out there. There's a few that are still considering it and, and looking at options. And again, it's not, not all municipalities call them whistleblower. And when you do a search, a lot of them are not called whistleblower, but they are doing the same thing in the employee code of conduct. So we have to be careful that we don't just restrict it to using the word whistleblower either. So I, I would hopefully that council seriously considers that as well. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, I'd like to thank you for your report. Listening to some of the comments, and when I hear that when people say that our staff don't have anywhere to go, like Counselor Vane had stated, I don't think that more options have been available to, to members, whether it's, they're covered under Bill one sixty-eight, the police, you know, the Labor Board. There's all kinds of other things to go through. So let's remember what the whistleblower is about. It's, it's, the whistleblower policy is addresses serious wrongdoings, which may include, not limited to the following, like in your report. So I want to thank you that. And like I said, not all of us here are qualified in, in human resources. So thank you for, for your expertise on this matter, along with the legal that's there. So I'm just curious right now, Mr. Mayor, if we could put a motion forward to receive this report and proceed with option two.
Clerk.
So just to clarify, just to clarify, we have two options, so we'll do a quick straw to see whether we're going to put option one or option two as a main motion on the table right now. Maybe we'll finish the discussion first, though.
The only, the only thing that I, I say, like, as you can see, we're having a discussion here, and I know our procedures. So I guess I ask the question is, is with no motion on the floor, are we going to allow everyone to speak twice now? And then turn around, put the motion on the floor, and then everyone speak again two more times? Or are we just going to, so that's why I like to put the motion on the floor to, to limit the, well, not to limit the debate. I think it's a great debate. So whatever the mayor decides is fine.
All right. All right. So the clerk's going to conduct a straw vote to whether it's option one. So the clerk's going to conduct a straw vote to whether it's option one or option two.
Counselor Bothwell.
Sorry. Has Counsel Cadwell already spoken? He's got his hand up.
Yes, he's.
Yes, he's already spoken.
So we're doing a straw vote. Is my amendment even going to be under consideration, Clerk?
So I think we need to decide which option is the main motion first, and then we can consider any amendments to the main motion.
Okay, mine is option one.
Counselor Dunstall.
Option two.
Counselor Frake.
Option one.
Counselor Cadwell.
Option two.
Counselor Ritchie.
Option two.
Counselor Sharp.
Option two.
Counselor Vane.
Option two.
Counselor Vardy.
Um, option one. Uh, however, more than us voting on this. I think it'd be really important if this were put to staff. And they had the opportunity to weigh in, because it's their whistleblower policy.
On the border. Here, Jordan.
Uh, yes, yeah, it, there's no, no commenting now, it's just a vote.
Mayor Jordan.
Uh, option one.
So option two is the. Option as the main motion.
All right, so we have discussion on option one. Or sorry, option two. Yeah, we just need a mover and seconder to get it on the table. Moved by Counsel Ritchie. Second by Counsel Vane. Counsel Vardy, you're first up for discussion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Remo. Have staff been consulted? And when I say staff, all staff, been consulted on these options? And, uh, that's the first question.
Dan.
My apologies. Through you, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the whistleblower policy, the options, Counselor, is that your question? Uh, we have consulted with the C L T team. Uh, we've shared it with among ourselves, we've shared it with our experts, of course, legal, uh, and the working team, uh, to bring this forward at this time.
So it's not been shared with all staff?
No.
And, and that, that's a concern. Because it, it comes back to that issue. What if the issue is the C A O? And how would the management team? Um, say something that would be contrary to the C A O. Uh, there'd be fear of reprisal potentially. So I, I don't think that this is really valid to come forward to us. I don't really think that this has had a fulsome staff input, which it should have. Because I've got concerns and I suspect, uh, staff would have concerns as well. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to refer this back to staff. To, uh, consult with, uh, employees to have a, uh, a staff meeting to discuss it. And to get their feedback and provide that back to council. And I think a refer, a refer motion to staff takes precedence. I'm not sure if the clerk can.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so referral takes precedent and there's no debate on it.
Okay.
Clerk's just preparing it now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, a question, sorry, if I may.
Yes.
Motion to refer is, uh, subject to debate only on the merits of referral and not substance of main motion. Um, so I, I would like to ask a question in regards to the referral.
Yep, that's, that, that is acceptable.
I just wanted to ask, uh, our H R, how much time have you spent putting this whistleblower together, this policy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's been a few weeks of gathering benchmark information and, um, doing due diligence and, uh, coming back and making sure that we have it right.
Yeah. I have a mover is Counsel Bothwell, a seconder. Counsel Vardy. Moved by Counsel Bothwell, second by Counsel Vardy. Resolve that report C O R P twenty-one dash zero one be referred back to staff to consult with all staff in regards to the whistleblowing policy. Recorded vote.
Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
No.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Uh, I have a comment, but I'm going to say yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
No.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Done.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a comment, please?
Yes, Counsel Cadwell.
Thank you.
Uh. I believe the debate would be over since the motion carried.
Well, I had my data before the vote.
Yeah, uh, it, the referrals are non-debatable. So that's what, that's why, uh. So. We're moving on.
As long, as long as we play this equally with everybody, Mr. Mayor, I'm content with that. Thank you.
All right, fair enough.
Thank you.
All right. Report, uh, eight point one C, uh. Chief Thompson, you're up. Counselor Sharp did send me an email saying he would like to be the mover on this, so I'll just get the mover and the seconder.
Fair game, if you like, sir.
Counselor Cadwell. Right.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before I give my report, I would just take, like to take a moment to thank several staff members and our solicitors. Uh, throughout this entire process, it was a lengthy one. I want to thank Sarah Sweeney and her team for assisting, uh, F P O Jason Mottershead with Bang the Table setup and ongoing information and review process. With the new platform, I want to thank, under the direction of Philip, uh, Jen, uh, Jen Gross. Chris Thompson from G I S for their identification and mapping tools that we have, can take advantage of now. I would like to thank Almira De Claudio for all her hard work and technical aspects that she's put through into this and our finance department. Can't leave them out of this. They've really improved our services at the town when it comes to the financial avenues that the residents will be able to choose from. And finally, to our solicitors, uh, John Mascaren and especially Rebecca Hines. Uh, great collaboration throughout this whole process of working on a recommended bylaw. Joining us tonight, uh, is Jason on now, Donna? I'm sorry, just, I was going to have Jason Mottershead. He was in charge of and signed the task to work with Sarah and, uh, Almira on creating our survey. And he was the lead for the survey for the fire department. So Jay was in, uh, interacted with our residents throughout the survey. And if there's any questions about the survey, I'd like you to ask Jason about that, um. What I can say is, we learned a lot from the survey. Uh, it speaks for itself. It was a tremendous response. I've never seen such a response to surveys in Grimsby. You know, we had over twenty-two hundred site visits. We had eighteen hundred residents informed by this page. We had nine hundred and three people that participated. But what we learned from it is we didn't ask one simple question. How many in your household? That survey of nine hundred and three respondents that showed over eighty percent that would like to see a change in this bylaw. Could have represented a lot more people involved. So we, we, we did learn a lot from it. It was quite well done. Um, as reported. We are approved in November to review our current bylaw with the town solicitor and provide recommendations on a bylaw. Following council's strategic priorities, we engaged the public with the survey in mid-January and closed in late February. In that time, we worked with the town solicitor on review of our current bylaw twelve for, uh, forty. And then our recommended pilot bylaw we're presenting to you tonight. According to our solicitors, the current bylaw requires some significant amendments to prove its effi- efficiencies to, to seek ensure that the rules regarding open air burning within the town were clear to its residents. With that in mind, and the survey well underway, we began analysis of comparing and best practices of all Niagara municipalities on open air burning. As did discussions with the town solicitors permitting open air fires in urban areas of Grimsby that supports the aims of fire safety. The health and safety of our residents and environment.
Good work. All right, we got some more.
Oh, sorry. I would like to note that every municipal chief I talked to said, be prepared for good and the bad, as we cannot please everyone. Though we can still make open air fires safe. This bylaw that we're recommending tonight provides an ability to be a compromise. For those that want to be able to enjoy a recreational fire in their backyard versus the public concerns of fire safety. Or unwanted exposure to driftwood in their yards. Our duty in the fire service is to gather the data and evidence and evaluate those against the risk in our community. We want our residents and council to know, we have the interest of the common good of, of most, not the few. And many may feel we are not looking after the common goodness bylaw, but I want you to know, we are. Complaints will always come into the fire service regardless if an open air fires are permitted or not. The recommended pilot bylaw provides the ability to be transparent to our residents. We completed an evidence-based approach to creating this bylaw. By reviewing Niagara Municipal, municipalities bylaws and our current fire-related stats. The recommended bylaw addresses fire safety, health concerns and environmental safety. We are asking for council to approve a pilot bylaw and allow the fire department, excuse me, to allow the fire department to provide updates. With statistics, statistics throughout the year of the pilot. This will also allow us to gauge and gather evidence of good and bad on the recommended bylaw. I want to thank you for your time and Jason and I are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, very much for your presentation, Chief Thompson. Uh, Jason, do you want to add anything now, or are you just going to wait for the questions?
Sure, I can wait for the questions. It was a pleasure doing the survey, though.
Oh, good. Counselor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bill, Jason. Absolutely great report. I mean, really, a lot of research and. It's, it's great to be get so much community involvement. I think it makes all the difference in the world when we, when we get that type of, that depth of, of, of community involvement. Uh, I trust both of you guys very much, uh, so, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to vote for this in, in favor. I do have a few questions. Um. The, the permit restrictions, um. Is lo- how do you? How do you police, will I use the right word? Um. Because I think you're, the restrictions you're suggesting are damn good and damn tight, are very rigid. I think that's great. I mean, you can't have a, a fire in your backyard unless it's a very small fire, so two feet or whatever it is. So it's, it's, it's quite. Controllable, I think. Not that I'm going to have one, because I don't. But how do you, how do you plan on policing those restrictions when, when you get them in place once we get approved?
Um, I can answer that, sir. Basically, uh, I'm working with the I T and finance department right now on one part of technical aspect. That could eliminate many of the, um, homes that go to apply for a permit. There's that twelve meters in width. So through G I S, as you seen with Jen and Chris have provided. I, I provided an example of an area in Winston Road. You can see homes that couldn't even apply for a permit, so those would eliminate those immediately. And then in that, um, report, you'll see another house in there that I know very well. And it shows a twelve meter width. But then we're going to have to go on honesty. We're going to have to trust people that are applying, they're staying four meters away from combustibles and six meters away from property line to road allowances and everything. So we're going to have to trust them on that. But if we show up, it's very clear throughout the bylaw, very clear it's going to be through our public education campaigns. We show up and we've been lied to. There's a penalty to pay for it.
Okay.
Your permit can be revoked and the fire truck. And it was really good to see, we had over sixty percent of the people in favor of charging the registered owner for the fire department attending. So I think, but our, our goal is public education right off the start. If, what, if approved in April, we will be moving forward with a campaign through water billing, through our staffing. We will be campaigning this very, very heavily to show people that we mean business if we have to, but we also want people to enjoy. We're trying to find that little bit of compromise.
Good answer. And I know it's very difficult to control every single fire and.
Yes.
You know, just a question, if, 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 if a, if a person has a fire permit. And lights a fire and stays within the rules of the, of the, of the fire bylaw. Uh, by the next door, and the next door neighbor complains anyways, how do you deal with that? If the next door neighbor complains with the fact a person had a fire, even though they have a permit and it's, it's within, within the rules.
So what would occur is a fire truck usually gets called out unless it's during the daytime, it's only prevention staff. We would investigate, make sure the person that applied for the permit did, uh, did meet all the rules and conditions that are in place. And then we'd probably go back or we'd make a telephone call because we don't, we do not take complaints without a name and a phone number. And then we will have a talk with that neighbor. We do have those in private. We don't show up with fire trucks to the neighbor and go out, talk to them. We show up in private or we'll talk to them over the phone if necessary. So we'll try and, uh, work with them to see if there's an issue or if they have that health concern, as you see in the bylaw. Like around the hospital, there's a seventy-five meters distance, we can put on anything, uh, under the, uh, the sensitivity registry.
Yeah, it would be, would be disappointing for someone who had a fire.
Yeah, it would be.
And the neighbor complained. That was why I brought that up. I'm sure, I'm sure it'll happen. There's always someone out there.
It happens now, sir.
What's, what's the cost to, to, um, if you get called out to a fire or to an open fire, is, what kind of cost are involved?
So we, um, there, there's, there's several different costs. So, so for us right now, it's about seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, but that doesn't cover actually all, all the costs. Those are our fees and charges for one fire truck at this time, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So if someone complains, you go to a, to check it out, who pays for that? I mean, is it the neighbor that complained or the, or do they pay for it at all?
Um, once again, uh, from the beginning, I'll be working with public education and then enforcement as we see needed. Everything doesn't require enforcement, but there will be a time that it has to be enforced. So the registered owner will be the one paying for any of the, uh, charges unless it's a frivolous complaint that continues on from the same complainant.
Okay, uh, to both of you. Um, is there any downside here? What's, what's your, what's your biggest, your biggest concern? I mean, you've done so much work and you've probably, you seem to have covered all the bases. So is there something that keeps you awake at night or is there one, one thing that might be a little bit bothersome? That extra hair at the back of your neck stand up or something? Because nothing goes perfect, as you know.
I, I agree. There is not, there is nothing perfect. And as I said in my report, um, this is a tough one and, uh, they, people are burning today. People are burning without permits. This way it gives us a control. Um, it gives us like your driver's license. You have conditions with the driver's license that you have to follow the Highway Traffic Act. The conditions in this bylaw are just laid out the same way. So at least it gives us a little control to ensure how many people are doing it and hopefully they're doing it safely in accordance with our bylaw.
How do you feel, Jason? Same way? You want to add to that?
Feel the absolute same way. It's, uh, you know, follow the, the regulations and everything should be good.
So I have immense trust in you guys. I, I think this is a good report. I think it's a, and I will vote for it. And it is, it is a, a test anyways, is it not? So, uh, lots of luck with it and I'm sure we'll be keeping our eyes on it and look forward to your next report. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Vardy.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well done, Chief Thompson and, uh, Mr. Mottershead, uh, really great report. And I mean, it's great to see a pilot. Uh, and you know, some of the highlights like the sensitivity registry, because I've already heard from some people who are quite concerned. Um, about some burning that, that might be near them, so that, that's wonderful. Um, a couple of questions, uh, this is stupid, but, uh, I assume trees are combustibles, right?
Through you, Mary, yes, correct.
Okay, I have quite a big property, but I, based on this, I can't have a fire. Okay, I have quite a big property, but I, based on this, I can't have a fire. Um, what about chimeneas? Is that an open air?
Through you, Mary. Through you, Mary. Yes, they are. That's in the bylaw as part of the complaint. Yep.
Okay, and, um, all right, I, I just, I guess finally I want to say that, um, I think it's going to be really important, uh, and I know you've already thought of this. Uh, to get the information out to residents. Because there are a lot of restrictions, like one of the things that I noticed was only between four PM and eleven. So you can't be having your fire during the day, only between certain hours. So, um, it'll be important that residents really understand the parameters uh, of what size, how long, when, um, and where, uh, they can do this, so.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, and I just echo, uh, Chief Thompson's congratulations to everybody for all their hard work on this. I can't name them all again, but yes. I understand the amount of time and expertise that went into creating this document and to Jason, very, very well done. Um, it, it balances nicely, um, what the c- community has asked for with safety, and I hope that that turns out over the year that you watch the pilot, that it is um, that it does, it is successful. Let's hope for that. Um, just a couple of questions. Um, the, in the Urban Fire Permit Regulations bylaw, B point two, B point two, section B says that ensure the open air fire is completely covered at all times, except when fuel is being added to the fire by a metal spark screen to prevent the escape of any sparks, embers, or other flammable debris from the fire pit or outdoor fireplace. So am I understanding that both fire pits as defined in this description thing and outdoor fireplaces must be totally enclosed, um, completely covered at all times? Is that correct?
That's correct unless adding the fuel, which is the log to it or the wood to it. That is correct. So we want a screen on ours.
They can't have a bunch of logs where you're, you're, you're doing your marshmallows over unless you have a screen over top of it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And one other quick question, I just, I, when, I know you said property line, but in the bylaw, it says maintain a distance of not less than six meters from the open air fire to an adjacent property. Are we just assume that means property line? Or should we add line when we say property? Just because, you know, where do they, some people might say, I'm, I'm not sure where the property starts or ends. I don't know.
Hey, thank you for that. I'll, uh, consult with our solicitor on that one. Thank you.
It's needed. Then the only other thing was, I think, I think you meant under number forty of the, um, of the just the, the stuff above the bylaw, uh, item forty refers to pursuant to section, um, thirty-seven. I think it should be pursuant to section thirty-eight. Because thirty-seven is about the sensitive receptors and I used in section forty says the fire chief shall cause notice of any ban declared pursuant to section thirty-seven of this bylaw. And the ban is noted in section thirty-eight. So just a little, just a little, overall, though, um, so that's such as me being picky, but, um, overall, I, I really appreciate it, uh, appreciate the hard work that went into it and, uh, I, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell, and I'll have those, uh, looked at by the solicitor again.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Jordan, and, uh, congratulations, Chief, uh, Thompson and, uh, FP Mottershead, uh, job well done. Uh, you, you guys really, uh, you set the bar high and, uh, I was very impressed with the report. Just a couple, one question and a comment. Um, the, uh, the, the bylaw, because you, now you see a lot of people in their backyards are having natural gas fires, uh, set up, ornaments I'll call them, and also propane. So is that, and I apologize, I, I read through it. Maybe I missed it. If I did, I apologize. Is that, is that in there at all, other than the open burn fires, uh, chief?
Uh, through you, Mary. Yes, Counselor Cadwell, that's an appliance under the fire code. Yes, if you remember, the old, uh, multi-residential was in there and we had barbecues. Well, we removed all that, uh, stay with, uh, regulations under the fire code that they're installed and, uh, maintained in accordance with manufacturer's instructions.
Great, great. Thank you for the clerkfish. And the other thing, I know that, uh, there's going to be some people that aren't going to be happy, people that live on, on smaller properties and that. I think, uh, the understanding of the bylaw is protect residential property. And, and their own property too, where people can burn. So, and also the, uh, respect of, uh, your neighbors too, you know, if the winds blowing really strong one direction. Uh, please don't, uh, to, to the public here, please use, you know, you know, good discretion and good judgment. Uh, when, when you, if you have a permit and you're, you're going to be having a, a small fire, but, uh, again, I, I, I think this is great, uh, chief. It's a one-year project and, uh, I look forward to your, uh, your updates, uh, in the, in the future. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Uh, my question to the chief and, um, FP Mottershead. So I wonder if, if we could make an amendment to the definitions when we talk about that it can't be, um, within four meters or thirteen feet of a mature tree or of a tree combustible substance. If we could exempt mature trees, um, provided that the branches above the tree are not, um, less than four meters above the fire. And, um, and that the fire is not set in such a way to injure the mature tree. So there are some trees that, they're quite big and, um, so you might, but maybe you might be ten feet or eight feet away from it or something, right? And some spots in your yard are a lot better to have a fire. And, um, if you're not injuring the mature tree and if, and if the combustible part of the tree, like the branches are, are more than four meters above. Then could the mature tree be exempted? Um, provided that you're not doing it and so, I mean, you can't light a fire at the base of a tree like, or even like too close to the tree, right? So if it's that way, if fire official shows up and, and your fire is like damaging the bark on the tree like then, uh, but remember, our fires are allowed to be twenty-four inches tall and twenty-four inches wide, so they shouldn't damage bark on trees, but, um, but there are some cases, there's probably many where, um, somebody might have a tree that in, in the definitions would be considered combustible material that's, branches are twenty feet in the air and, um, the perfect spot is, um, underneath or, or like in that area. So can, can you comment on that? And, um, if we change it, will we change it now or when do we change it?
Um, through you, Mayor. At this time, I'm going to stand by our bylaw as it is written. I don't want to make any changes to it because as you said, uh, mature trees to not mature, it's a, it's a judgment call and I'm an arborist, but I've seen many trees people thought are mature and they're very dry and tender and rotten on the inside. So I'm standing by the way the bylaw is written at this time. I do not want any changes to it. I feel it's a safe factor of four meters that we have.
Okay, um, so then, um, my other question is, um, with regard to, um, cooking. So if you're cooking on the fire, because we have this, uh, screen you have to put on there, but, um, if you're using the fire for cooking. Um, so I know there's exemptions in the fire code or the fire code, I guess, um, for cooking fires. So do you have to cover the fire while you're cooking on it?
Uh, through you, Mayor, and to correct myself from count, answering Counsel Bothwell, you are correct under the fire code. If it is for cooking purposes, solely for cooking purposes. You will not probably have to cover it because you probably need to get something. It could be tinfoiled on it. I couldn't explain it, but as soon as the cooking's over with, we expect the fire to be out. If it's for cooking purposes only, if it's a fire, we expect it to be screened.
Okay. No, thanks, because I mean, if you are cooking on a fire, it's, it's hard to do that with, uh, the cage over top of it.
Correct.
Um, and so I intend to, to do a little bit of marshmallow roasting and, um, maybe hot dogs. Maybe, maybe I'll even experiment with like a baked potato or something like that. But, uh, um, my other question, um, is with regard to the permit, the cost, I, I know, can you tell me the cost first?
Um, we're proposing two costs. One will be if they come to town hall in person for forty dollars. And the other one is something that we're encouraging and it was something I found online, uh, from the town of Lincoln. Uh, encouraging due to the pandemic and, uh, an online permit. So with a discounted price of twenty-five dollars plus HST plus the, I'm not sure the charge for a service charge for using your visa. I think it'll come around to twenty-eight dollars. So it'll be discounted if it's online.
Yeah, that, that's great. And I, I like the discounted rate to go online. It's actually the easier way for me to pay and, um, but it's not much more to pay in person if you have to, but, um, so is there a way that we can, um, wh- what I would prefer, uh, because I'll forget to, to get my permits. Is, is there an option where I can select an auto renewal? I mean, with no contract or no, I can, that I can cancel it anytime, but what I'd like to do is get a fire, my fire permit as soon as this bylaw takes effect, and then I'd like it to renew each year. And, um, I'd like to just pay it on my property taxes. And, um, so like, and then I could cancel it. I mean, if maybe if you put a little slip in my property tax, it says like, you've been renewed for your fire permit. Um, and then a little note on there that says you can cancel it anytime. But, um, that's something that would make it easier for me and I think other residents too. Like, so you take out your fire permit, you select the auto renewal and then that way, um, you know, those times that you have a fire, you're not like, oh, did I renew my permit? And like, when, um, was that this year or last year? Like, I mean, some people are going to just say, oh, I forgot to renew it, but, um, personally, I'd like to, to do an auto renewal. Is that possible?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, after some discussions with staff, my best recommendation is not to do this. Uh, one of the biggest concerns with is if we do go to a property and we possibly have to suspend or revoke the license. And then we forget the auto renewal comes up a year later and this person's auto renewed. So I don't want to create complications moving forward. So my best recommendation is not to do this.
Okay, thank you. Um, what, last question. When, when would this take effect? If we approve this tonight, um, can I have my, buy my permit tomorrow or tonight online?
Through you, your worship. Uh, I'm sorry, this won't be ratified until the April meeting, so we're hoping for the first week in April.
Okay, uh, thanks very much, Chief Thompson and FP Mottershead. Uh, great work. I'm really happy to see this. I've, I've talked to a lot of residents and, um, the one was, was questioning about asthma, but, but in general, many residents are very happy to see this, um, initiative come to life and, and I, I really think that it's a good thing. So, um, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, uh, thank you both, uh, Jason and Bill for all the, the work you've done and, and with it being a part, uh, pilot program. We can use the year to, to work out any bugs and, and it will probably, uh, end up being modified after that year. But it's, it's really good to have something in place so we can enforce it. Thank you very much, both of you. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Cadwell, resolved that report FCR twenty-one dash zero three, Open Air Fires dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one be received that the committee approved bylaw twenty-one dash seventeen, a bylaw to regulate the setting of open air fires in the town of Grimsby and that bylaw twelve dash forty be revoked, a bylaw to regulate the setting of open air fires in the town of Grimsby. All in favor? That's carried. All right, now we're moving to, uh, report nine point one DRS or deep, yeah, DRS twenty-one dash zero five. Sarah Sweeney.
Good evening.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I through you, I'm happy to answer the counselor's questions. I believe it's Counselor Vardy.
Counselor Vardy.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, basically, I just wanted, where are you, Sarah? There you are. Uh, basically, I just wanted to commend you on, uh, a really nice report. Um, you know, it was quite informative and now I've got all this at my fingertips for when, uh, I, I get inquiry, so uh, I really appreciate it and I also can see that you've put considerable, uh, effort into that and, and I've done a very nice report. So thank you for that. Um, the one question I have for you, which I don't recall seeing there unless I missed it, was what's happening with the pier at the Palm House?
Sure. So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the pier, there is some work, actually Public Works has been doing some work on that as well. We'll be working with them on that. Uh, Key is also doing some E A work and design work for that area. So there will be stuff coming forward, uh, a little later on with that.
So, um, we did receive, didn't, did we not receive gas tax money to repair the pier?
Uh, not specifically, no. I, uh, we, when we received the gas tax money and, and Stephen maybe would want to correct me. If I'm wrong, please do jump in, Stephen. Uh, I don't, like, we assign how we use that, those funds and it hasn't been assigned to the pier as of yet. I do think however, it has been identified that gas tax could potentially be a source of funding for the pier.
Okay, is the pier a priority?
Okay.
I, I would say, uh, yes, at least in terms of exploring how exactly it gets designed. Of course, there's some facets to that and I, I suppose to some degree that's also a decision of council ultimately, right? From a funding perspective, that will be the biggest challenge with the pier. So I think it's been heard from staff that it's a priority of council to explore what those options are. And then the priority in terms of timing and design selection will ultimately be one that's made, I think collectively with staff and then ultimately by council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bothwell.
Mayor Jordan, I'm again, really, really happy to see this. Sarah, thank you so much for your work put into this. Extreme information to the community. I think it's really, really valuable. Uh, it helps me out a great deal in answering a lot of questions that come my way. So I appreciate that you dealt with, um, you know, that, that the, uh, Casablanca Waterfront Park project will be available very soon on the Let's, Let's Talk Grimsby for some community engagement. I, um, I, I reached out to the community with your civic recognition nominations. The deadline is the twenty-fifth coming up, uh, this week. So I, I think if anyone hasn't yet submitted for that excellent, uh, candidate or volunteer in the community that should be recognized, they still have time to do that. Thank you for bringing up this report. And, and I've had questions about the leisure guide. So I see that you're going to a new approach. Um, I, and I, I hope that, um, I, I've seen some really great strategic social media stuff you've done, but maybe can you help me understand a bit more about how that leisure guide will be, will be how people can access that information?
Sure, uh, through, through you, Mayor Jordan. So if you recall last year, almost the same week that we published our leisure guide for the spring and summer program. We began to close down all of our programs and services due to COVID nineteen. And unfortunately it meant that that book, that takes quite amount of work and, and contributions, uh, quickly became quite irrelevant and had to drastically change. And that's basically why we haven't proceeded with a leisure guide at this time. We have to remain very agile and flexible. And that is how we have been approaching our programming and will continue to do so, just because whether we're in red or orange or yellow, everything continues to change. So to put something in paper that's really intended to serve at least a four-month time period just isn't been the best use of our resources at this time because it may continue to change. So the digital approach has worked a bit better. We can change it more quickly. We can be a little bit more flexible and adaptive. It's not to say we wouldn't go back to the leisure guide at some point in time because we do realize it's a very valued tool. It's just until we get back to that stability, we find the digital platform is a little bit more useful for us.
Can you just maybe expand on how the, uh, members of the community can register for your digital newsletters? You said you had a thousand subscribers. How do people get that information?
Certainly. So we started through our active net, um, registration system. People that indicated they're interested in, in newsletters were able to reach them that way. We're just in the midst of determining how exactly we're going to use newsletters because we're going to have an overarching newsletter and also some specialty ones. Once we finalize that, we'll be doing some big pushes out to the community so they can select the ones that they want to choose. And then we'll be pushing it more as well. We haven't pushed that piece, uh, very too far yet, just because we're still sort of finalizing how exactly that's going to look. So we'll make sure we get that out there and, uh, and that all of you are aware as well. So you can communicate to your constituents that it'll be a great resource.
Thank you again. Very much appreciated, Sarah.
My pleasure.
Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Sarah. How are you?
I'm well, and you?
Great report. Thank you so much. Uh, I know you've done a lot of work on this, you and your team. And it's a great reference document, I must admit, because many times we we wonder where this is, where that is, and this 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 particular report pretty much covers everything at an umbrella level, which is which is really good. So I will, you definitely use it as a reference document. I have one question for you, and it's related to pickleball. I'm sure that you're getting lots of calls about pickleball. Thousands, probably. Uh, I know you have intentions of putting a pickleball court in Southwood Park. Is it one or two? I'm not sure.
Uh, three, Mr. Mayor. It'll actually be four.
Four, even better.
Four courts.
You know that Southwood Park is way up into beyond on the other side of Grimsby. Uh, and I note in your in your report here that uh, it would be desirable to add future pickleball courts in some other neighborhood parks. Have you done that survey yet, or is that is that just commencing? Or because I think there's been a lot of suggestions about pickleball parkour courts down in the downtown area, you know, the the northern part of Grimsby.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have a survey up right now on Bang the Table. Uh, it's getting quite a bit of interest. We're also getting a lot of calls and emails. People are very excited to see pickleball in the community, which is tremendous. Um, and and a real cross section of our community interested in it, certainly a lot of seniors, but families as well. So it's it's exciting to see the interest in it. Overall, I I guess Southwood Park is a little bit of a of a drive, but relatively speaking, um, it's not too far from downtown. And one of the reasons Southwood Park is most appealing for a four court design is there's a real community interest to see some league and maybe some tournament play. And certainly, a facility like Southwood Park that has ample parking, has washroom facilities on in onsite, even in indoor space, it just lends better to that type of use. But what we're note, what we're hearing from the community and what we somewhat suspected anyhow, was that there is also a value in having neighborhoods have pickleball courts. So something we're going to look at as a takeaway, sort of a second piece to this down the road is how can we use some of our existing asphalt pads in some of our other parks to potentially also offer pickleball? It wouldn't be to remove basketball, because we've gotten a lot of calls about that as well. But it would be a way to find that there could be both uses than more of a neighborhood. So that would serve as more the that local walkable community. You could walk to this court and play with your family. But if you are playing in a league or a tournament or something bigger, or maybe there's an instruction, there's actually been a lot of interest in even receiving instruction. We would move that more towards sort of that uh, community sports complex piece.
I was thinking that maybe we should should start coining the phrase that we're the pickleball capital of Ontario. Maybe we can get a lot of the counselors to pick up pickleball and we can have, we can go up to the pickleball court and let's get our frustrations out. Maybe that would be nice.
I think you'd find you and you'd enjoy the game very much. It's a fantastic game. So once we get it built, you can all come up and play.
Maybe we could have Carolimian pickleball.
Yes.
The other, the other question I had for you, and that was related to Bang the Table. I I didn't get a chance to talk to you about that before. But how is that working out for you? You've mentioned it in here and you've used it a lot for community involvement and and surveys and so on and so forth. Is that working out very well for us? Or for you?
Uh, three, Mr. Mayor, I would say absolutely. Uh, feedback has been very good. Um, with that platform, we have a number of staff projects already lined up to use that platform that just really you use the tools that it has very well. And if you haven't been on it, I really do encourage all of you to check it out, encourage your your constituents to look at it. Even if they don't want to contribute to the survey, it's a great way to get information. There's timelines on there, staff you could contact, related documents, uh, and it's all in one spot and it's very visually easy to follow. So the feedback has been very good. We've gotten good registration numbers. I can tell you that our engagement rate for Bang the Table so far has been about twenty percent last I looked, which was last week. That's really high. Uh, ten to twelve is often where you aim. So we're seeing a really good engagement rate. So when you are going to the site, that just means that you're actually doing the survey or you're you're answering the questions or whatever those tools are. So yes, I would say absolutely. And I think you're going to see throughout the course of the year, it gets well, gets very well used.
Thank you. So we're getting, we're getting, uh, we're getting paid, pay for our money. We're getting paid back.
I would say absolutely, and I will towards the end of this year, bring back some more information. So you can see that. The nice thing is, it's all data. You can see exactly how many people are visiting the projects, what they're doing when they go there, just in terms of numbers, of course, so we know if they're reading the documents or if they're doing the surveys. So you'll be able to see all that information.
Thank you, Sarah. My applause to your team and yourself. Thank you very much for the report. Keep keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'll be quick. Uh, we have a long night ahead of us. Uh, yeah, I want to thank Sarah for the report, great report. Just a question I do have, Sarah. Last year with the uh, COVID and everything, the availability and using the uh, the freeze box, is that is that planned to be used for uh, pickleball again? Because my many times around Town Hall and in Town Hall, I'd walk out and there was a uh, there was a couple, I'll say a couple teams uh, using the the full uh, the full uh, the 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 surface, sorry, the the uh, for the freeze box. So is that? Is it, what are your, what are your thoughts and plans to that again? Because I thought it was fabulous. Thank you.
Sure, through us, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, until we get pickleball courts built elsewhere, that is where they will be. Um, it's it's not the best space for pickleball, but we make it work. So for the time being, that's where they'll continue to play. And there are some other activities that will be on that court, uh, or that's uh, the freeze box this year. We'll have some ball hockey again happening this year. Uh, and maybe some other sport uses as well. I think we're gonna see this year's more outdoor um, sports and activities. So we're hoping that maybe the outdoor rink gets used even more, just to keep people outside wherever they can.
Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I just had a bit of a point of clarification. When you were talking about Bang the Table, and when people want to visit Bang the Table, are we talking about Let's Talk Grimsby dot C A? And um, if they Google search Bang the Table, will it direct them to that or? Um, or do you have to go Let's Talk Grimsby?
Sorry, yes, you're you're right. I should clarify, yeah. Bang the Table, of course, is the the vendor, the owner of that platform. Our page is Let's Talk Grimsby. So you would go to Let's Talk Grimsby dot C A.
So it's best if you're looking for Let's Talk Grimsby and answer those, because Bang the Table might take you to um to the service provider site. And maybe if you search Bang the Table Grimsby, it'll bring you here, but Let's Talk Grimsby dot C A is um, the place where we have a lot of public engagement going on and um. You hear from the fire, open air fire permit, we got thousands of engagements and um, a lot of respondents. So so that's the spot you're looking for. And thank you, Sarah, um, for the clarification.
Thank you.
And thank you for that clarification, Counselor Sharp. Seeing no further questions, just thanks a lot, Sarah, for that report. It was really a a great update. It's really nice to to um, see what's going on. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that report DRS twenty one dash zero five Parks Recreation and Culture Information Report dated March twenty second, twenty twenty one be received for information. All in favor? That's carried. And we move to report or ten point one, uh, report DPW twenty one dash zero seven Award of Consulting Services for Grimsby Sanitary Sewer Flow Monitoring, Sewer Model Design and Sewer Capacity Analysis. Brandon, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, I think uh, Counselor Bothwell had pulled this, so I happy to answer any questions if there's anything.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Sorry, Brandon, I just have a quick question. Um, in reading the report, and I appreciate the work went into it, and I know this is um this sole source contract is is necessary, and you put a lot of uh, thought into into it. Um, under the one section of it, um, page two of four of your report where it talks about the Roberts Road's uh, sewage pumping station is of particular importance because it says uh, the region was undergoing some new modeling. And they're using the same company that you're proposing here, and they blasted modeling back in, I think, twenty sixteen. And they've now reviewed that modeling and their engineering consultant has built some different models that now have come up with a bit of different information. And as a result of that, your report states that in Grimsby's case, there are two immediate area areas of the local sewer system that have been identified as requiring further analysis, namely the area within the Lake Street uh, sewage pumping station and the Roberts Road SPS catchments. And the Roberts Road is of particular importance. The region's model in this area was identif- has identified potential capacity concerns, which are contrary to what the town's previous analysis of this area had shown. Therefore, additional flow monitoring, modeling and analysis of the areas required to ensure both models are properly calibrated to each other, are reflective of the current situation, and are to the level of detail required for the local system. And given that the results of this review could potentially have an impact on current and future development projects in the area, it's imperative that the analysis be carried as soon as possible. So my question is, because this kind of came up on the Four Windward Drive in their matrix with the region's comments as well, and they talked about using the twenty sixteen regions uh, modeling and and then they talked a bit about some concerns in that in that development. Um, I didn't go deeper into the fifth wheel one. I suspect there may be a similar type of uh, comment in there. So my concern is um, we've identified a modeling concern. We've identified a potential that the Roberts Road Station can't, at this point, may not be able to handle the capacity that's being proposed in the near future because they're looking at a ten year capital improvement. Um, is there any reason we should be cautious about approving developments until that upgrade is done, or will it have the proper capacity and flow to handle those these two developments that are proposed as they are? Or should we be looking at waiting until those capital improvements are done?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor, and that's an excellent question. So again, uh, with respect to the, should we have concerns? I mean, generally, uh, what I'm, what I understand from the current model is that there are uh, the flow uh, and the analysis being done is based on the ultimate build out of the this area. So not only includes the uh, most current developments, but future developments as well. And my understanding is that's where the capacity issues come into effect. So it's maybe not with respect to the uh, immediate developments, but uh, the the long term uh, impact of future developments could be uh, you know, at at play here. So um, again, I I'm recommending that we proceed with this as soon as possible. Idea being we get the flow monitors in uh, you know, shortly, so we can get the wet weather flows uh, monitored and get a report uh, analysis, complete analysis done hopefully by the end of summer, which then would be in a lot better position to evaluate to all of the developments going forward. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. Can we ask that staff come back with some, with the results of that? Um, and provide counsel with an update uh, near the end of the summer when you have more information and perhaps um, I I don't know if you or our regional counselor can also bring back comments on the region's plans for any improvements um as a result of that. And that the tenure plan on what your, the timing, just because if there is any potential, it's the same as the Casablanca interchange. The MTO said we're not going to give you another permit until we get the region to commit to upgrading the uh, some of the ramps and and the in the extra, the over, the overpass.
Yep.
To me, we need to be serious in the re, we need to take this seriously with the region as well, because infrastructure is a really key component of approving developments. And if there's any, if there is a concern that we're going to put something in and it's premature and we won't have the capacity, I think we need to have that information. So if you can help us out um, and provide whatever you can and what the regions uh that would be very helpful near the end when you know.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, this is part of, this specific component is part of the larger Pollution Prevention Control Plan and the Master Plan Update. So as part of that process, the the region and the town and the other local municipalities, so Grimsby, Lincoln and West Lincoln are coming out, coming together with a comprehensive plan, which will include capital impacts over the next uh, ten years or so uh, to look at, you know, what what infrastructure is required, including pumping stations and sanitary upgrades and so on. So uh, we will certainly, once that uh, that that document document will be made published, uh, sorry, will be made public, published uh, at a later date, and we certainly can update council uh, when that's provided. And I I'd be happy to uh, bring back more information uh, to council uh, once we get the results of the of our own study through uh, Blue Plan if uh, council approves this.
Sorry, just one last question. Um, the Roberts Road services Lincoln, West Lincoln and us, is that correct?
Sorry, no, just to clarify. So Roberts Road is the the sewage pumping station that services the Roberts Road, everything upstream of Robert. So that's like the Casablanca area, North Service Road, South Service Road. Uh, the Pollution Prevention Control Plan and Master Servicing Plan uh, are evaluating the all the sewage catchment that ends up at the Baker Road wastewater treatment plant. So uh, you know, West Lincoln, Lincoln and Grimsby all tie into the region's network, which ends up at the treatment plant.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I'll be pretty brief here, Brandon. Thanks for the report. Really glad to see that you're uh, you're right on top of this, trying to move as quickly as possible because again, I I asked the question about the uh, the uh, truck stop property, there was sandy development and all this development that's coming on board. Can our infrastructure uh, handle it? And I've been getting some good information from yourself and the region. But people have to remember, there's a little history here. When we had the Bigger Lagoon in place on Big, on, I'm sorry, on Winston Road, just west of the Oaks, Oaks Road, that Bigger Lagoon serviced all of Council Sharp subdivision, Kelson Avenue, a very, very good part of the West End. So the the Bigger Lagoon was closed off, and I I apologize, I don't remember the dates and that, but so now all of that is going down, down to, uh, as you mentioned, Brandon, down to the Roberts Road uh, uh, you know, pumping station. So uh, this is important stuff that we're, that you're really taking a good lead on, and I'm very, very happy and pleased. And again, I can't thank you enough, Brandon, because uh, it is. Uh, we gotta make sure our infrastructure can properly handle, and if not, developers pay for it to help us out. So anyways, Brandon, just a comment. Thank you very much for your uh, your initiative and and leadership to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandon, for the uh, expansion on this report. Uh, and we'll look forward to those results. Need a mover and seconder for the motion? Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that report DPW twenty one dash zero seven Award of Consulting Services for Grimsby Sanitary Sewer Flow Monitoring, Sewer Model Design and Sewer Capacity Analysis dated March twenty second, twenty twenty one be received. And the council authorized the Director of Public Works to retain G M Blue Plan Engineering Limited in the amount of eighty six thousand, seven hundred and eighty five dollars excluding HST in order to provide consulting services to the town of Grimsby. All in favor? That's carried. Now we're moving to section twelve, notices of motion. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, we have section ten point two, uh, resolutions on flood pain. Sorry. Thanks. I have, uh, Counselor Frake is a mover. Just need a seconder, and then we can open up discussion. Counselor Vardy. And I'll open up discussion. Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, so after seeing this notice come up two weeks ago, I I took some time and I went into to look into um maybe the jurisdiction of the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority. And and I talked to the N P C A through our, our member, Bruce McKenzie, who is a neighbor of mine. And um, they wrote me a letter and what they said was that um, said, thank you. I can appreciate the public's frustration dealing with the flooding issues that reoccur. I understand that there are localized flooding issues south of Main Street in the Lake Ontario Tributary twenty nine watershed, also known by the town of Grimsby as Outlet Thirty. This watershed was included in the N P C A recent Grimsby-Lincoln floodplain mapping. I can confirm that the focus of the N P C A's floodplain study was to map the flood of the NPCA's floodplain study was to map the flood-prone areas in and around the open creek channels only. In the Lake Ontario Tributary 29 watershed, the main open creek channels extended only up to Arrowhead Municipal Park. And as a part of the public engagement for this floodplain, for this floodplain mapping project, I've heard from local residents living in the area south of Main Street, from their description, it appears that the flooding is caused by the local storm sewers and the drainage ditches being overwhelmed by large stormwater flows. As this is an issue with the local municipal infrastructure, I would suggest that the municipality is in the best position to address this situation. The NPCA will endeavor to provide assistance to the municipality should our help be requested. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any further questions." So this is from one of the engineers at the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority. And it sounds like from their previous studies that this is town infrastructure, ditches and sewer mains, storm sewer mains. So it's good for us to to do a study that we can figure out what what our needs are. And then next step is what the costs are, because because this is not inexpensive work. But I mean, I live, I represent what for I'm on the complete opposite end of town, and I've heard about the flooding in Arrowhead Park, and I know about this. I mean, I've been in town for a while. But obviously, it's an issue. And and it sounds like it's something that we can solve through our local infrastructure. So I'll support this study. And I just want to from Brandon, what what would be the next steps? What what will we do next if we pass this motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, I understand the motion is really for a staff to bring a report forward to provide more information with respect to the floodplains and stormwater management in general. So at this point, again, if council adopts this resolution, then we would bring back a report. Again, my understanding is the initial concept would be just to provide more information to council with respect to how we how we deal with stormwater management in terms of new developments. I understand that there's two pieces of correspondence from from delegates that were included on the agenda, which we will review in further detail as well to try to identify if there's any concerns or well, there are obviously are concerns, but we can look at what impacts those are and what history we have with respect to those concerns as well. So again, my understanding is this is would be an information report to council at a later date to provide further clarification with respect to stormwater management design and general principles.
Okay, so it starts with a report, and then we can make resolutions after we get the information. Then I'll support that we should get this report, and we can make our decision when we're informed. Thank you, councillor Frake, for bringing this. And Brandon, I'm going to vote in favor of this, so hopefully we can get a report. Thanks.
Councillor Bothwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And yes, I appreciate councillor Frake's motion here. I think it'll it'll help the community understand how we how our official plan outlines our responsibilities and municipality, as well as what the role of the NPCA is with respect to floodplains and how we can mitigate any kind of adverse impacts. I just wondered from Brandon if I understand from participating in the NPCA's floodplain mapping recent community pick that they held, that they updated it, and it's now been approved in the regulations, the actual regulations, the mapping has been updated. So at that meeting, it was interesting because the NPCA mentioned that had that updated mapping to Tributary 2930, whatever had been done at the time, the way that some of the developments had been the new developments were commented on by the agency may have been different because of the way that new floodplain mapping was reflected. I'm just wondering if when you do your report, will you be taking into consideration that recent NPCA information, as well as the report that they produced, the Aqua Aqua 4, whatever it is, beaten report, where they provided some recommendations to municipalities on how to mitigate some of the flood-prone areas. I think there was 13 of them they had recommendations for. And again, I've mentioned this previously, Lake Ontario 44A, Kelson Avenue North, there was some mitigation measures in there for municipalities to look at channel works and stuff. So will you be considering that as part of your report, Brandon?
For sure. Yeah, we obviously we've reviewed the Niagara Peninsula NPCA's stormwater management, I guess, study that they did in terms of the floodplains. We as staff had had some comments and with respect to some of the outlets that we've been in conversation with the NPCA further to that study. And we can certainly bring council into the into the fold in terms of where we're at with those discussions to date and the general principles that they're identifying. So so in essence, yes, we can certainly bring that forward.
Thank you.
Councillor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, councillor Sharp, for going the extra length and talking to Bruce McKenzie, because I spoke to him as well, and he basically told me what you told me. I've spent some time talking to Brandon as well over the over the past couple of weeks. And I brought this forward only because I've received a number of complaints, and that was a number of folks and business and a couple of businesses as well, that were affected by flooding or floodplanning, that type of thing. So I thought it was about time we probably found, you know, got educated, first of all, as a council. And also, at the same time, you know, get the community educated as to how floodplanning works and what we do about it, and what type of programs we have in place to cover these types of things. I mean, I did I did my own research on a lot of things, I mean, in terms of how flooding happens. And it's some of them we're not even aware of. I mean, probably as on a day-to-day basis. I mean, some of it is related to infrastructure, maybe inefficient infrastructure. And I'm not saying that we have inefficient infrastructure, Brandon, by any means. Do we have enough of it, I guess, is the question I would ask. And how much will it cost to ensure we have the most efficient? So I mean, you know, flood flooding and floodplanning is, you know, is a product of development. I mean, for example, I mean, look at the huge developments in the town. I mean, as soon as you put a large development on a large footprint, the water has to go somewhere. It may have been it may have been absorbed by trees. And I found an interesting statistic that a medium-sized tree, and it could be Carolinian tree too, councillor Vardy, you know, it intercepts about 2,380 gallons of water per year. That's one medium-sized tree. So when we cut down a tree in a development area at the bottom of the escarpment, 2,380 gallons of water or rainfall is now going into the soil and will end up somewhere downstream. And obviously, it will flow around any development that's going on, whether it be on Main Street or anywhere else. So water will find its own will find its own way. So, you know, flooding is caused by, of course, you know, the usual the usual things like like any of the developments, one, deforestation is another. Impermeable surfaces, I didn't realize that impermeable surfaces like concrete, paving, you know, pavement, roads, that type of thing, which is not permeable, so water has nowhere to go. So it has to go somewhere. So flows across those those barriers and goes into areas like ditches and people's backyards and so on and so forth. There's a bunch of other things here, too. And there's also, of course, the climate change, which, you know, greenhouse gases, which our councillor Cadwell is going to address at our next meeting. So there's a lot of things. I mean, I don't know how we prepare for the future of those type of things. I looked at the increase in temperature in Grimsby, and would you believe in the last 20 years, the the temperature within within Grimsby has gone up 6%? So again, it's all related to, you know, greenhouse gases and those types of things affecting the environment. So so there's a lot of things I know is there's I didn't realize how complicated it was till after I spoke to Brandon, and he gave me a little bit of a lesson on that. So I think it's it's good timing. And as I say, there's some businesses out there that I would like to know how we deal with it. And and there's a lot of there's a lot of residents who are dealing with this thing on a day-to-day basis. So so again, this this resolution was meant to be a report, bring it forward. Tell us what you know, what's what's happening out there and how we can address it going forward. So thank you, Brandon, and I look forward to your report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Frake. Before I allow councillor verdict, Regional Councillor verdict to speak, are there any other questions or comments from council? Councillor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to let councillor verdict speak first. It's but it's all good. No, thanks for bringing this forward, councillor Frake. As he's aware, with Arrowhead Park, a few years ago, I believe the year we actually got elected, there was a massive flood there. So where that storm drain comes out and it goes into Arrow Park, where the connection is, it goes to the open field and it runs along along a pathway and went out to Tomahawk and flooded the area. So I think that it's very important to get this done. But also that I think it's also important to put on the radar the the development at the Corniffe. We've talked about proper drainage there during the entire project. So I think this just brings it to the forefront to ensure to look at things. So we can make sure that it's done properly. So just a little friendly reminder that we need to make sure that the Corniffe project is, you know, big, big concern from the residents around that area for for proper drainage.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Regional councillor verdict.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for letting me to possibly give a little bit of guidance here in reference to the mapping and whatnot. It's my understanding with the official plan that the region is doing is there's there is a lot of this mapping that you're talking about. And maybe Brandon could double check with the commissioner of planning, Mr. Giles, Doug Giles, and also Bruce Zavinga, who is the Public Works Commissioner. I would hate to see you go out and spend money when, in fact, that the region, I do believe, now I could be wrong, but I do believe that a lot of this mapping and stuff that's going to be done by the region. So maybe you can piggyback and save some money or whatever. I don't know. But I would just ask you to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to maybe ask staff to double check with region staff, because they're pretty busy. And we've had lots of reports of stuff coming through already. So just just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor verdict. That'll be certainly noted with Brandon, I'm sure. Yeah. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll read the resolution. Moved by councillor Frake, seconded by councillor Vardy. Whereas the town of Grimsby is affected by a floodplain caused by water flowing down the escarpment and pooling across its east-west boundary. And whereas the floodplain causes general property damages and prevents many residents and businesses in the town from enjoying, improving, and using their property to its full extent. And whereas the residential areas near Arrowhead Park and numerous businesses on the South Service Road have been immensely impacted by flooding. And whereas the US Geological Survey has identified that urbanization generally increases the size and frequency of floods and many and may expose communities to increased flooding flood hazards. And whereas urbanization, including town-approved development, removal of trees and related activity alters the natural flow of water, causing it to find alternate paths. And whereas these changes result in flooding in areas previously not affected and or increased flooding in existing flood-prone areas. And whereas council has identified responsible development and the environment as part of its strategic priorities. And whereas services associated with the prevention, mitigation, and resolution of flooding issues throughout the throughout Grimsby are currently identified, addressed, and maintained through the town's public works programs, and costs are covered by mostly by development charge process. Therefore, be it resolved that the town public work staff bring a report to council, which gives an overview of the cause and effect of floodplains and the process utilized by the town to offset current and future floodplain issues, and also issue a public communication to inform our residents and businesses accordingly. All in favor? That's carried. Now we move to our notices of motion. First notice of motion, introduction date today, March 22, 2021. Subject chickens requested by councillor Sharp. Resolve that the Director of Planning, Building, and Bylaw be directed to commence a public consultation regarding the keeping of chickens on residential properties to determine if Grimsby residents would support such an initiative, and if so, under what conditions? That the Director research what regulations other municipalities have enacted that permit the keeping of chickens on residential properties. And further, the Director report the findings of the public consultation and research to council. I acknowledge that this notice of motion will be given consideration at the April 6, 2021 meeting. Second notice of motion, March 22, 2021. Phase out of all gas-fired electric electricity generation requested by councillor Cadwell. Whereas the Government of Ontario is planning to increase greenhouse gas, GHG, emissions from Ontario gas-fired power plants by more than 300% by 2030, and by 500 or more by 2040, reversing more than 40% of the GHG reductions that were achieved by phasing out coal-fired power plants. And whereas GHG emissions are causing temperatures to rise in Canada at more than double the rate of the rest of the world, causing impacts to municipal operations and affecting the town of Grimsby residents. And whereas municipalities account for 50% of global emissions, thus necessitating further action by all sectors and other levels of government. And whereas council's strategic priorities have committed the town of Grimsby to taking action to ensure protection of the natural environment. And whereas a number of Ontario municipalities is supporting a call for the phase out of gas-fired power plants by the year 2030. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Grimsby write to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and the Minister of Environment, Conservation, Energy, and Parks to request that the Government of Ontario develop and implement a plan to phase out all gas-fired electricity generation by 2030, and that the resolution be sent to the Minister of Environment, Conservation, and Parks, and the Minister of Energy, Northern Development and Mines, Grimsby MPP, and Ontario Premier Doug Ford, as proposed by the Ontario Clean Air Alliance. I acknowledge that this notice of motion will be given consideration at the April 6, 2021 meeting. Up next, we have correspondence. Before I read the long list, does anyone want any items lifted? Councillor Frake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to lift the Niagara region support for wine for the wine sector. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right. So that'll be discussed separately. Any other wanting to be lifted? Seeing none, I just need a mover and seconder for the correspondence. Moved by councillor Vane, seconded by councillor Vardy. Moved by councillor Vane, seconded by councillor Vardy. Resolve that the correspondence under Administration and Finance with reference to NPCA Board Meeting highlights, Niagara Region Report Optional Small Business Tax Subclass Overview, Town in Niagara and the Lake Support of the Wine Sector, Township of Lake Abay's Letter to Premier Regarding Capacity Limits to Restaurants in Stage Two, Niagara Region Schedule Six, Bill 197, COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act 2020, Town of Grimsby Fire and Safety Grant Announcement, Province of Ontario Capacity Limit Changes for Some Events in Gray Lockdown Phase One COVID Vaccination Plan for Frontline Emergency Personnel and New COVID Border Testing Orders, Province of Ontario New COVID Border Testing Orders Under the Quarantine Act, Province of Ontario Resource Document for Peace Officer Assisting Under the Quarantine Act, Province of Ontario 2021 COVID-19 Relief Funding for Municipalities, Province of Ontario COVID-19 Relief Funding for Municipalities Program, and that the correspondence under Planning Development with reference to Niagara Region Report, Niagara Official Plan Process and Local Municipality Conformity, Niagara Regional Report Natural Environment Work Program, second point of engagement be received. All in favor? That's carried. And the lifted correspondence. And the lifted correspondence councillor Frake is the mover. Seconder councillor Dunstall. Councillor Frake, did you want to comment first or did anyone else want to comment?
Well, I just want to call out. I mean, you know, I think it's great that this particular correspondence is going through this motion. I think there's two. I just picked the one. But I mean, Grinsby doesn't have a lot of actually full, full-service wineries. At least I didn't think so recently. And I found that there's absolutely fantastic Grinsby winery up on Kemp Road called Villa Bacchus. And myself, my wife and a couple of friends visited them there a couple of weeks ago. And even though they claim, you know, their address is Beansville because they want to stay within that wine district. I think they're an undersold and an unsung hero. It's a great winery and it's, I just, I just hope, I just want to give them a call up more than anything else and congratulate the region for actually endorsing and asking for us to support the wineries. And we do have at least one really good one that I know of. And I just like to mention that. So going forward, let's try and support our local wineries.
Thank you, councillor Frake. Councillor Vardy?
I'd just like to mention that the only winery in Grinsby is in Ward Two. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's noted. Seeing no further questions, moved by councillor Frake, second by councillor Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence under administration and finance with reference to Niagara region support for wine sector be received. All in favor? That's carried. Our next meeting is scheduled, of the committee, the whole is scheduled for March 29, 2021 at 6:00 PM. With a planning public meeting and will be available through electronic participation. The meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. We'll follow with our committee meeting in, or council meeting, sorry, in at 9:35. We'll see you then. Thank you. Moving to number three, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, before we do the approval of the agenda, I just have an announcement to make about the Casablanca Corporate Centre. Recently, Homes by DeSantis moved into their new offices at the Casablanca Corporate Centre, bringing with them 22 new full-time corporate jobs to the town of Grinsby, adding to the hundreds of jobs resulting directly from their construction activity in the area. Early feedback from the DeSantis staff has been very positive. Engagement with the local neighborhood, restaurants and commercial businesses in the area is already occurring. Representing the early stages of the economic spin-off resulting from the development of the corporate centre. Homes by DeSantis has also recently undertaken a comprehensive rebranding, becoming DeSantis Homes. A new website highlighting the new brand has launched as well. The new facility will also allow DeSantis Homes to operate a multi-site sales office adding new operational capacity at the Windward Drive. Lastly, I can also advise that while the name of the company cannot be divulged at this time, the Casablanca Corporate Centre will soon become home to another high-profile tenant who has roots in Niagara and operates through Ontario, Quebec and the US. A full-floor occupancy at the Casablanca Corporate Centre will bring new jobs to and is strong, a strong indication of the market demand for such a facility here in Grinsby. Great news. Thank you. Councillor Vardy, we're moving number four, approval of the agenda.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to lift two items. One, 5A. The notice of motion about the sign bylaw. And I'd also like to lift a correspondence to discuss at the same time, 11A.
All right. We, that will be noticed, but we'll do that after the approval of the agenda because that's just a lifting. So it won't.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right. Councillor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just the clerk. I don't know if this is the proper timing to ask for a change to the order of the agenda. I did speak with councillor Furtick regarding the regional council update, which is number 12 on the agenda for council and to be able to ensure, give councillor Furtick the opportunity to speak. to speak earlier in the agenda, we discussed this, and I'm asking if we could move the regional council update to the committee of the whole following delegations. And I don't know if councillor Furtick is still on the call today, but I did, I did speak with him earlier and he was supportive of that. Is that something that we could look at doing through a motion, or?
Yes, the clerk has indicated that that wouldn't be a problem to change procedure and have councillor Furtick much earlier in the meeting. Then he can choose to stay if there is something on the agenda that he really wants to speak about.
Thank you, so we can move him to, if we could move him to committee of the whole at some point, perhaps after delegation, that would be great.
Yeah, if, if, if we do need a resolution to do that, I'm quite happy to do that as well, but if all council is accepting on that, I don't think we necessarily need a resolution, is that correct, clerk? Yeah. All right, that'll be noted, thank you councillor Bothwell. Now we move to adoption of previous minutes, councillor Vardy.
Yes, I wanted to lift 5A and 11A.
All right. All right, councillor Sharp.
Yeah, Mayor Jordan, thank you. I would just like to request a point of information or point of clarity with regards to the March 1st minutes. So, we approved a motion and the intent was to suspend the pay. And, and it was written as to, to make pay. And so I want to know if we can clarify through the clerk, the difference between the intent of the motion and the way the motion was written? Because I feel like the, the motion was read with the word "pay" in it, but, but my, the way I spoke to it in the meeting, I'm the mover of the motion, was that I wanted to, to suspend the pay.
Yeah, I believe that motion was defeated, so.
No, that motion was carried, so can I ask a question of the clerk? How do we, how do we represent the intent of the motion, rather than the way, the way the motion was read, if the motion was read different than, than the intent which was spoken at the meeting?
A point of order to the clerk, should this not be, we have to wait for this discussion until if those minutes are lifted?
It's, I just have a point of information, I'm asking the question of the clerk.
But I think, I think you're asking direction now, so, so that, that needs to be done later in the meeting.
So before we approve these minutes, can I add a clarification?
See you, Mr Mayor, are you asking for an information request?
Yeah, that's what I want, I'm sorry, a point of information, an information request. Now regarding the intent of my motion on March 1st versus the way it was read and written. So we had discussion and I, and I made that motion. And, and I believe that, that the intent was to suspend the pay, and I, and I said that, and the mover, well, I'm the mover, and the seconder, and I agreed to that, but it wasn't read that way, and therefore it wasn't recorded that way. But it's all, like, we do this live, so it's all on the, on the minutes, you can look at February 16th, 2 hours and 46 minutes till 2 hours and 48 minutes is the time when that happened, and I, I used the words to describe my intent.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah, we'll note that and we'll clarify.
Yep.
We just need to, a mover and a seconder for the approval of the agenda. councillor Frake, councillor Bothwell. Moved by councillor Frake, seconded by councillor Bothwell, resolve that the agenda for the council meeting of March 22, 2021 be approved. All in favour? That's carried.
My apologies, Mayor Jordan, I didn't realise that we hadn't approved the agenda, I thought we were in the adoption of previous minutes, I apologise.
That's accepted. All right, we are 5A and 11A, so you're going to clarify that, perfect.
See you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Vardy. I'm just looking at the minutes for, sorry, 5A. And 5A was, sorry, regarding a delegation. Can you just clarify which item you wanted to lift?
Yes.
Is it by title?
It's, it's the motion that I raised last meeting about portable signs.
Sure, I have CW2170 for that. And you had another one?
Well, the other one is correspondence, that's related to that, so I wanted to speak to that correspondence at the same time.
Oh, that correspondence is in our agenda for tonight, not from the previous minutes.
No, no, okay, so from the pre, I'm sorry, I wanted to lift resolution 10A, not 11A, sorry, my mistake, that's probably why it got confusing.
E, perfect, so 10A, CW2170.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the correspondence is attached to this meeting from the Canadian Civil Liberties Association.
Yeah, that'll be discussed later in the meeting, when, all right. All right, so we have the motion to lift 2170. We have councillor Vardy as the mover, we have a seconder, councillor Ritchie. Moved by councillor Vardy, seconded by councillor Ritchie, resolve that CW21-70 be lifted from the committee of the whole minutes of March 1st, 2021 for separate consideration. All in favour? Roll. Yeah, it looks like. All right, why don't we have a recorded vote, it looks like some people don't have their hands up.
Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yep.
Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
All right, all right, we'll vote the discussion on this topic that was lifted. Councillor Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to put a motion to refer this item. Item 10, resolutions portable signs, CW21-70, refer it back to staff to work in tangent with legal to review the portable sign by law and report back to council with any recommended changes, if any.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that, Mr Mayor?
Sorry, sorry, yes, you can ask the mover.
Yes, I'd like to add that we immediately cease any notices, fines, what have you, for anyone who's in contravention of this unconstitutional bylaw. So I know that some people have received letters telling them that the town will take further action. I think that this action, the friendly amendment that I propose, would be that the town rescind any letters that have been issued with respect to this and cease any further action until a new bylaw comes forward. Would you agree with that friendly amendment?
No, I'm not prepared for that amendment, thank you.
Then I'd like to put my own amendment. Mr Mayor, I'd like to put forward my own motion.
I would second councillor Ritchie's motion, Mayor Jordan.
So what we have on the table now is a referral motion, so we will vote on that now. Moved by councillor Ritchie, seconded by councillor Sharp, resolve that resolution CW21-70 regarding portable sign be referred back to staff for recommended changes, if any. Recorded vote?
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Bothwell?
Yeah.
Councillor Dunstall?
Can I get a point of order, Mr Mayor? In all fairness, to councillor Vardy, who asked to amend the motion, an amendment to a referral is allowed, so if she wants to put that on the floor, I think that it should be heard.
All right, councillor Vardy.
Oh, she's muted. She's, I think she's muted, so.
Councillor Vardy, oh, there you go.
Okay, so I, I, I don't know if it's a friendly amendment or how best to do this procedurally, but I think that we need to immediately cease any action against anyone that, that has a sign. I know some letters have gone out, and I really think it's inappropriate this time. I, I know that one resident has received one saying that if he didn't take down his sign, the town was going to take further action, so I would like either a new motion or an amendment to this motion to say that we would not take any further action against anyone who has a sign on their lawn at this time, until the, until the bylaw can be reviewed and to make sure that it is constitutionally valid.
Councillor Ritchie?
So my understanding is that, that it's due to, in order to have a sign, you need a permit, and there was no permit purchase for these signs, so I'm not, I'm not okay with a friendly amendment.
Then, to, to the clerk, can I add a motion after this? Because we, we can't pick and choose who we decide has to get a sign permit. So all of those signs that say "no more lockdown" are all those people getting letters to have their signs taken down? What about, say, West Lincoln Hospital, are all those signs going to get a letter? We can't pick and choose, we can't, we can't, you know, just say, well, we, you know, we agree with you, so we'll leave you alone, but we don't agree with you, so you're, you're going to get a notice that you have to take your sign down, you've got to buy a permit. You know, what's fair for one is fair for all, so you either do it to everyone who has a sign, or no one that has a sign, so, you know, we've got to be consistent here. And I don't think what the town wants to do is to start making every single person that has a sign start buying a permit. What about the nursing home on, on Main Street East? They've got tons of, of signs saying, you know, hope and strength, you know, they've got many, many up on their property. Are you going to make sure that they buy several permits for their signs? We can't pick and choose, it's not right, it's not fair, it's not democratic, so I don't know how you want to do this procedurally. You know, councillor Ritchie does not want a, an amendment to, to, to his referral, that's fine, then I'd like to put forward a motion that we cease and desist on all notifications asking people to remove their signs.
Mr Mayor, if I may, my, my understanding is, is that a motion to refer has limited discussion. Councillor Vardy has the right to make an amendment to the motion, you can, she could put it on the floor, we'll vote on the amendment, and if it's defeated or if it's approved, then we go forward with either the main motion or the amended motion, there's very limited discussion on this.
Yes, and that's, we have the, we have the amended motion, and it's not, wasn't friendly, so councillor Vardy needs a seconder for the amended motion, and it'll be put on the floor. Councillor Bothwell? Moved by councillor Vardy, seconded by councillor Bothwell, resolve that resolution CW21-70 regarding portable sign be referred back to staff and recommended changes, if any, and that for recommended changes, if any, and that staff be directed to cease any enforcement at this time. Recorded vote?
Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
I'm thinking, I'm going to say yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Wish we could have a question, but anyways, for the time being, I'm going to say yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
No.
Councillor Sharp?
No.
Councillor Vane?
No.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Need a mover and a seconder? Need a mover and a seconder for the committee of the whole minutes as amended? Councillor Frake? Seconder? Councillor Dunstall? Moved by councillor Frake, seconded by councillor Dunstall, resolve that the committee of the whole minutes of March 1st, 2021 be approved as amended, that the council minute, as I'm, sorry, resolve that the committee of the whole minutes of March 21st be approved as amended and that the council minutes of March 1st be approved. All in favour? Okay, a recorded vote again, people aren't putting up their hands.
Councillor Dunst, ah, sorry.
I heard that, I heard that councillor Cadwell. When people don't put up their hands, and I can't see everyone, there's, we have over 20 people on, on the screen right now. So you can reserve your comments, they're noted.
Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Frake?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yep.
Councillor Sharp? Councillor Sharp, I think you're muted.
I just wanted to make sure that my inquiry from before got included?
Yes, that was noted.
Okay, then, yes.
Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried. That's carried.
Up next, we have moved to number 11. Correspondents from the Canadian Civil Liberties Association regarding opposing sign bylaw 9745. Need a mover and seconder to get it on the floor. Moved by Counsel Frake, second by Counsel Dunstall.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification. If this is correspondence, why are we bringing it up as an issue? We normally receive correspondence. We don't sit there and discuss every piece that comes in. I'm just curious.
Well, it is being received. That's what the resolution says. Moved by Counsel Frake, second by Counsel Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence from the Canadian Civil Liberties Association be received. All in favor? That's carried. All right, we have no regional councillor update this week, and we're glad to hear it's going to be earlier in two weeks. Now we move to number 13, bylaws. Need a mover and seconder?
Counsel Furtick was waving his hand there to speak.
No. Counsel Furtick, you had said that sent an email, so you weren't going to speak tonight, I thought, so. You're muted right now.
If I may, please, Mayor.
Well, you do want to speak now, all right.
I have two announcements I'd like to make.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. And there shouldn't be any discussion. And this Saturday and Sunday, the 27th, 28th, we're starting our vaccinations at the YMCA. The vaccinations in St. Catherine's have gone very, very, very well. And a lot of people have been in and out in just about no time in order to get their vaccination. The other announcement I'd like to make is that your three regional councillors of Niagara West are going to be holding on April the 6th with the local chambers, Grimsby, Lincoln, and West Lincoln. We are also asking to participate with us, each municipality's economical development officers, as well as the regional EDOs. The theme of our discussions is going to be about small business. So I ask each and every one of you, if you wish, please call in with your questions, hoping that we can, we've got to spur the small businesses on. And this is one way that we're going to try and do this. So that's April the 6th. The three regional councillors are having our regional councillors' town hall meeting again. Thank you very much, Mayor, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Counsel Cadwell and Sharp, are these questions for Counsel Furtick?
No, if I may, Mayor, it's just an experience that I had with my mother. Being Counsel Furtick brought up both the vaccinations. I'd just like to, if I may, I had a very positive experience with my mother taking her to getting her shot in the arm. If I'm allowed.
Yeah, that's, you could save it, either talk about it now, we can do the bylaws, or you can save it for announcements. I'm quite happy to do either.
Sorry, Mayor, I think it's good timing to say, just to give my experience now.
All right, sure.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to take my mother to the McBain Center in Niagara Falls, where she got, received her Pfizer vaccination. It was very seamless, very well organized. As I was in there, I was just looking around and then I'm thinking, to me, this was a template of the YMCA. Everything is on the first floor, the way you went in and the way you had to exit out the back door, the recovery area, they needed a very large area, which was the gym, to facilitate shots and recovery areas. So I just, and I'm just looking forward that, I'm sure under the regions, under the public health guidance and that, the YMCA is going to work out very, very well. So that's all, it was just a very good experience. Thank you.
Counsel Sharp, is this for announcements or to comment on?
It is. I wanted to thank Counsel Furtick. Last week, he brought what essentially became an announcement about replacement recycle bins. You get your new blue box, gray box, or green bin. If you bring your damaged green bin to the Town Operations Centre before April 1st, you get a free new blue box, gray box, or green bin. And they're not very expensive to replace normally, but free recycle bins. And so you can go down to the Operations Centre across from the Legion in Grimsby from 8 until 4:30 on Monday to Friday. And bring your bin, and you show it to them, and they'll give you a sticker to put on it, and they give you a new bin. And Counsel Furtick brought that to our last meeting. And I posted about it on Facebook, and it's been a big hit. Everybody, there's been a lot of attention. So I wanted to thank Counsel Furtick. I wouldn't have known about it if it wasn't for him. I got my own green bin or blue bins. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp. Then we're moving to number 13, our bylaws now. Moved by Counsel Bothwell, second by Counsel Frake. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws 21-14 to 21-16 inclusive, that same be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the second reading, second and third reading? Counsel Vane, Counsel Sharp. Moved by Counsel Vane, second by Counsel Sharp. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw 21-14 to 21-16 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time, and finally passed. And the mayor and the town clerk do sign and seal the same and rule counsel to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. Before we move into closed session, we're doing announcements. Announcements, Counsel Frake?
Can I ask a question?
Does she have a question?
I do. I'd just like to ask Counsel Ritchie and Counsel Vane if they've changed their titles to speakers. I just want, just noting that they are now speakers of their wards. I guess what does that leave me and Counsel Sharp as councillors, I guess, huh?
It just says that I'm a speaker of Ward 1. So you did the same thing.
I'm just wondering why you would change your title to speaker. It just kind of, you know, it kind of, it slights me. You know, I'm not sure how Sharp feels, but.
I apologize if it slights you, but it's a speaker of Ward 1.
Yes, so am I.
That's right, you're a speaker of Ward 1, too. Yeah.
I'm the councillor of Ward 1.
All right, moving on, Counsel Sharp.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to make a quick announcement about the West Niagara Secondary School Theatre. So yesterday, Saturday, I went to, they had their first fundraiser event, and they did it online, it was a concert. So you bought your tickets through Eventbrite, and then you could watch it online. And they had cover bands, mostly cover bands. Past students and musicians and artists did mostly covers, but they had, what's his name, from the Barenaked Ladies?
Stephen Page.
Yeah, Stephen Page. He was not a cover, he wrote an original. But, so, maybe that isn't original, maybe they covered that song, but anyhow, they. You know a lot about the Barenaked Ladies, Mayor Jordan.
Yes, I do. We grew up with the Barenaked Ladies.
Yeah, so anyways, it was great. I talked to Principal Matt Miller, and he said that 388 tickets were sold and that they raised just under $10,000 on Saturday night for the school. I know Counsel Cadwell was there, we talked about it afterwards. It was a good show. There were tickets for about 27 bucks. So there's going to be more events, I'll post about it on my social media. You'll probably find it on the school socials, but it's worth going to. It's a way that you can help contribute to this new theatre. And so thanks to the organizers, and it was actually, it was a great job.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, here, let me put my hand down here. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'd just like to piggyback a bit off Counsel Sharp's report with the virtual concert event. I had a conversation with Mr. Miller today, too, which was really, really interesting. He said that all those entertainers that were there, they did it free gratis, which is pretty amazing. And their stories were just so positive about the theatre and that. And again, I'm very familiar with Barenaked Ladies, too, and seeing Stephen Page do the last song and the song that he did, that he wrote, it was just a great event. And again, I look forward to more of those. But I just want to say, I also was part of the Zoom meeting for the chamber. They had their AGM meeting on March 10th at 4:00 PM. I just want to wish the chamber their new board of directors. They have a very dynamic group there. They've got a lot of good things on, moving forward on the horizon there for the businesses of Grimsby. So I just want to thank them and wish them all the best of luck in the new year. Very, very good event. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Seeing no further announcements, I have a couple. First, I will talk about the West Niagara Secondary School concert. It's great, the amount of local entertainment we have in our midst. And just listening to them, especially liked what Tom Wilson had to say and Brian Mallow, who was, I think, in the top three on Canadian Idol. And certainly the odds as well, they all did original songs. And Stephen Page as well. Stephen Page has had a long history with himself and Ed Robinson from the Barenaked Ladies. And they're just great Canadian performers, and they all value the significance of vibrant arts community in secondary schools and how, coming from a family that the arts scene was really an important part of our high school experience, both my own and my daughter's. It's just a shout out to Matt Miller to have a principal that is this invested in the community and in the three communities for that matter. And I see nothing but positives for West Niagara Secondary School moving forward. So I'll just leave it at that. And, oh, a second announcement. The March 22nd to 27th is Meals on Wheels Week, and we're hoping to organize a flag raising. Details to be announced at town hall over the next couple of days. So seeing no further announcements. Next meeting of council is scheduled for April 6, 2021, following the Committee of the Whole. And now we are moving into closed session. Before we move into closed, we have the electronic participation closed session statement declaration. Good evening, members of council. Before we begin the closed session, all members are reminded that any discussions enclosed are to remain confidential as per procedural bylaw and our code of conduct for the council of the town of Grimsby. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following. That you understand that matters are to remain confidential. Confirm that no one else is present with you. Confirm that no one else can hear this closed session. Confirm that you are not using any electronic devices other than your tablet or computer for the purposes of this video conferencing only. And confirm that you're not recording any portions of this meeting. If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with, "I understand and confirm to all the statements." Counsel Bothwell?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Counsel Dunstall?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Counsel Frake?
I confirm to all the statements.
Counsel Cadwell?
Understand, confirm to all the statements.
Counsel Ritchie?
I understand and confirm to all of the statements.
Counsel Sharp?
I understand and confirm to all except for the electronic devices.
All right, that's noted. Counsel Vane?
I understand and confirmed all these statements.
Counsel Verdi?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
And I myself, I understand and confirm to all the statements. Need a mover and seconder to move into closed? Counsel Sharp, Counsel Verdi? Moved by Counsel Sharp, second by Counsel Verdi. Resolve that council meet in closed session regarding the following. Under section 2392B, personal matters about identifiable individuals of the municipality. Personal matters about identifiable individuals. All in favor to go into closed? And that's carried.
All right, welcome back to open session. We have need a mover and seconder for the verbal update from closed session. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Recorded vote. Oh, sorry, I guess I have to read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the closed session verbal update regarding personal matters of identifiable individuals be received. Recorded vote.
Counselor Bothwell?
It's just received, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That's carried.
All right, now we have mover and seconder for the confirming bylaw. Counselor Ritchie and Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Vardy. Resolved that leave be given to introduce bylaw 21-18 inclusive and that same be read a first time. On favor? That's carried. The mover and seconder for second, third reading. Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Vane. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Vane. Resolved that leave be given to introduce bylaw 21-18 inclusive read a first time. Now be read a second and third time and finally passed in that the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same. And rule counsel to the contrary notwithstanding. On favor? That's carried. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.